All stand for the invocation of thirty believers. We rather change beliefs in the prayer.
Y'all, we pray. Gracious eternal God, we commend that with thankful and grateful hearts for you and the blessing. We thank you, Father, for bringing us to the first meeting of the year. And we ask that you would give us the wisdom and knowledge we need to go through this year. We pray that you would keep us safe and bless our citizens in a special way. In your precious name we do pray. Amen.
Amen.
I'd like to thank you.
To the flag.
Of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is our first meeting of 2022. So the first item of business tonight is to the election of chairman. We've been following our rotation, so the next person in line is Supervisor Miles. I'll take a motion in a second if anybody wants to accept that motion.
So move.
Second. Motion in second, that Supervisor Miles will serve as chairman for 2022. All in favor, raise your hand. Supervisor Matthews?
Yes.
Alright, so that passes seven. Congratulations, Mr. Miles.
Thank you, Mr. Carter. Thank the board for their confidence, and as we move forward, let's do it together as one board and one county. So moving forward to item E, confirmation of the 2022 vice chairman of the Board of Supervisors. And in rotation, that would be Reverend Chambers, Supervisor Chambers of District Six. And I'll entertain a motion for that action.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Supervisor Brian, second by Supervisor Allen, to confirm Supervisor Chambers as vice chairman of the Board of Supervisors for 2022. Is everyone ready to vote? Please raise your hand. Aye. Those opposed? Supervisor Matthews?
Yes.
Okay, the motion carries seven to zero. The next order of business is item F, approval of the agenda.
So move.
Supervisor Brian?
Supervisor Allen.
Supervisor Allen.
Would you entertain postponing M three? The solar policy? We need to postpone that. I'll second your motion.
It's a few more things we probably need to dig into.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
The motion is to adopt the amended agenda. Motion by Supervisor Allen, second by Supervisor Brian. Does anyone have any questions before we vote? All in favor, raise your hand. Those opposed? Supervisor Matthews?
Yes.
Okay, the motion carries seven to zero. The next item is item G, approval of the minutes. Can we have a motion for that, please?
So?
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Supervisor Bryant, second by Supervisor Allen, to approve the minutes as presented. Does anyone have any questions? Call for the vote. Please raise your hand. Aye. Any opposed? Supervisor Matthews?
Yes.
The motion carries to approve the minutes. Next item is approval of claims, item H.
So move.
Second.
A motion to approve the claims by Supervisor Davis, second by Supervisor Allen, to approve the claims. Does anybody have any questions? Please raise your hand. Aye. Those opposed? No. Supervisor Matthews?
Yes.
The motion carries to adopt the claim, seven to zero. The next item under our business is item I, approval of the bylaws and rules of procedure. Does staff want to discuss the one change that is in there? Mr. Carter, in terms of the electronic policy, sir?
Supervisor Miles, that is the one change in the bylaws this year. In your package tonight, you should have in your folder, three ring binder, our policy concerning having meetings through electronic means. If you read that as well, you will see that, you know, if a person like Supervisor Matthews tonight calls in and can't make it to the meeting, they can vote by phone. So that's the change we made for 2022.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Carter. Does any supervisor have any questions about that one change to our rules and bylaws, gentlemen? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adopt those.
So move with the changes.
Second.
A motion by Supervisor Allen, seconded by Vice Chairman Chambers, to adopt and approve the bylaws and rules of procedure. Does anyone have any questions before we vote? All in favor, raise your hand. Those opposed? Supervisor Matthews?
Yes.
Okay, thank you all. That is unanimous, seven to zero. The next item is item J, announcements. Do we have any announcements? Seeing none, we'll move on to item K, public comments. And this is a time where citizens of the county get three minutes to offer a public comment on any other subject other than what is scheduled during public hearings. So please keep that in mind, because we do have several hearings coming up on our agenda. So this is for items not for public hearing. So I'll ask Mr. Schumaker, who is our clerk tonight, to call our first public commenter.
Yes, sir. We've had one person sign up, four emails, and one voicemail. Eddie Slagel, District Two.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Mr. Carter, Ms. Edmondson. My name is Eddie Slagel, and now I'm in District Two. Just wanted to congratulate Mr. Miles and Mr. Chambers on their confirmation tonight. And for those of you that don't know, Chairman Miles is also going to be the president of the Buckingham Chamber of Commerce for the next two years. And this is sort of an announcement, I figured I'd say it while I was up here. We have our banquet on the twenty-third, and it's, I'm sorry, twenty-fifth. And it's going to be at the Firehouse. Tickets are twenty dollars, and you have to pre-buy. And it's going to be a nice event. Piggin' Out is going to be catering it. So it'd be nice to see as many of the supervisors as possible there to support Chairman Miles also in his endeavor to be president of the Buckingham Chamber of Commerce. But I'd like to say that Supervisor Matthews kind of lucked out on the redistricting, because they redistricted me out of his district. And now I'm in Chairman Brian's district. Ha ha.
Do I know you?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Schumaker?
Alright, our first voicemail for tonight is from Judy Brown.
This is Judy Brown calling. I have a farm next door to Pam and George Goodwin, and I missed the meeting last Monday night. I'm wondering if you could put in comments for me that I am fine with doing a B and B at their place, but I do not want the public camping part of the agreement. So that's my comment. The B and B part is fine. The camping permit, I would have trouble with. Thank you very much. It's Judy Brown. My number is four three four nine six zero six nine zero three. And I have the farm adjacent to Goodwin's. Thank you.
Our next is Cynthia Feneau.
Re, case twenty-one ZTA sub two ninety-four for Joseph S. Kaufman, to be read at the Board of Supervisors meeting January tenth, twenty twenty-two. January ninth, twenty twenty-two. My name is Cynthia Starkey Phinos, my husband, and I live at thirty-two seventy-six Buckingham Springs Road, District Three. Our property is adjacent to the Kaufman property. We have lived here for over thirty years. We are vehemently opposed to the construction of this industrial manufacturing facility as described by Joseph Kaufman. There are twenty-one homes within half a mile on either side of the Kaufman property, which will be highly impacted. This is the most dense area on the entire road from Route fifteen to Route six oh nine. As per Mr. Kaufman's proposal, the constant noise produced by a large diesel generator, air-powered nail guns, and sawing equipment during ten hours a day times six days a week will be extreme. We all remember the many weeks last summer when Kaufman's professional contractor prepared his two point two-three acres without a permit for his proposed business. Another very pressing concern is the additional traffic. According to Mr. Kaufman's proposal, there will be more or less fifty trucks a week carrying a wide load to and from through six blind curves, the Kaufman's property to Route fifteen. I, as well as several other locals, walk this road every day, and I know this is a major problem. With Mr. Kaufman's planned triple expansion in one to three years, it becomes a nightmare. No less concerning is the environmental impact on the surrounding properties through runoff from toxic applications and human waste. Mr. Kaufman should consider the industrial park in Dilwyn. Cynthia Starkey.
Alright, our next is from Marie Flowers.
Dear Board, I am Marie Flowers, Third District. For some reason, I thought that when the notice of a public hearing for a zoning issue was published, it had to be correct or the hearing was automatically postponed by law. Obviously, this is not so. Shouldn't this be adopted? As to the zoning issue for Mr. Kaufman on Buckingham Springs Road, I am against it for many reasons and also to support my friends who live there. The Amish are astute business people and hard workers. They know they would need a zoning change to set up this business. Please take this into consideration when making decisions. Marie.
Our next is Philip Feneau.
Re, case twenty-one ZTA sub two ninety-four for Joseph S. Kaufman, read at the Board of Supervisors meeting January tenth, twenty twenty-two. January ninth, twenty twenty-two. My name is Philip Phinos, my wife, and I live at thirty-two seventy-six Buckingham Springs Road, District Three. Our property is adjacent to the Kaufman property. We have lived here for over thirty years. We are vehemently opposed to the construction of this industrial manufacturing facility as described by Joseph Kaufman. There are twenty-one homes within half a mile on either side of the Kaufman property, which will be highly impacted. This is the most dense area on the entire road from Route fifteen to Route six oh nine. As per Mr. Kaufman's proposal, the constant noise produced by a large diesel generator, air-powered nail guns, and sawing equipment during ten hours a day times six days a week will be extreme. We all remember the many weeks last summer when Kaufman's professional contractor prepared his two point two-three acres without a permit for his proposed business. Another very pressing concern is the additional traffic. According to Mr. Kaufman's proposal, there will be more or less fifty trucks a week carrying a wide load to and from through six blind curves, the Kaufman's property to Route fifteen. My wife, as well as several other locals, walk this road every day, and I know this is a major problem. With Mr. Kaufman's planned triple expansion in one to three years, it becomes a nightmare. No less concerning is the environmental impact on the surrounding properties through runoff from toxic applications and human waste. Mr. Kaufman should consider the industrial park in Dilwyn. Philip Phinos.
Okay, Kendah Hanuman?
Kendah Hanuman, District Five. I support community solar projects and items like air B and Bs that help avoid polluting, environmentally destructive development.
Our last is Betty Mitchell.
A manufacturing facility for storage sheds should not be allowed on Buckingham Springs RD. That is right in the middle of a neighborhood, at the beginning of the fork off of Old Kitsville RD. It would be a traffic hazard, at the very least, and a nightmare for the surrounding neighbors. I used to live on that road, and sightlines around those curves and fork are bad enough without having a bunch of large trucks in and out all the time. Please vote no on this issue. Betty Base Mitchell.
Mr. Chairman, that's all that we have.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Schumaker. That concludes our public comments at this time, and we are going to continue on our agenda to item L one, which is VDOT road matters, with Division Resident Engineer Scott Frederick. Mr. Frederick, are you on the line, sir?
Mr. Chairman, he cannot make it tonight, so he wanted you to give me your concerns, and I will give them back to him.
Okay. So we'll start with Supervisor Allen and move our way around with any VDOT road issues or concerns. Supervisor Allen?
I've got one concern. Allen, Lake Road, at the bottom of the hill, there's a big covert. I've been told that it's starting to cave in on the left side, coming down the hill. That's something I need to check on too, but that's just a report I've got.
You good Supervisor Allen?
That's good.
Supervisor Bryant?
Well, Water Road and Dunmore Road, where the intersection is, is a big hole on the right-hand side of the road where you make a turn. Needs to be filled, hole, I guess.
Okay, thank you, sir. Supervisor Davis, any VDOT issues, sir?
Just to be glad when they get to work on cleaning up the storm damage. We still got trees hanging over in the road in parts of my district, and it needs to be, might have had an accident.
Okay, thank you, sir. Supervisor Brian?
I expressed the same thing. I'd like an answer of their timeline to get that damage cleaned up. I came up sixty tonight, and there's no, less than about six spots where the trees are very close to the side of the road. I'm just concerned that it's going to cause an accident.
Thank you, sir. For Mr. Carter, for the Maisel District, there's a large pothole at the intersection of Rossar Road and Ranson Road, where Vice Chairman Chambers and my district come together. Also, Old Mill Road is still pretty rough. It's off of Slate River, Slate River Mill Road. The median sign is down at the intersection of twenty and Slate River Mill Road there, right at Route twenty market. And then if you turn right, like headed to Dilwyn, there's a curve indicator sign that's been run over top of, if you're headed towards the intersection there, twenty and fifteen. And I'd like to thank VDOT for their work on the Red Road when it comes to the pre-hard surface operations that they have on the other end of the Red Road, the Route sixty end. Vice Chairman Chambers?
I got to say, concerns already been stated, but I would supervise the cleanup of the Bree off the road.
Thank you, sir. Supervisor Matthews?
Yes, sir. I'd like to get some answers from some of the questions I had last month about the washboarding on several roads. Had seen any difference in any of that stuff since we talked about it last month. So anyway, if we can get an answer on that and the cleanup throughout the county on all, in all districts.
Alright, thank you, sir. Any other board member have any concern before we move on with regards to VDOT? Okay, so moving on under M, presentations. Our first item for consideration is Dr. Keeler, Interim Division Superintendent of Buckingham County Public Schools Regarding Alternate Education Classroom. And Dr. Keeler, we'd like to welcome you, and we look forward to what you have to say today, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and good afternoon, good evening, board members. Last month, I had an opportunity to mention a proposal, alternative education program. I have, in my time, been a beneficiary of a good alternative education program, and I want to explain a little bit to you how it works. When we have kids, young people, that make a mistake, that gets them suspended from school for ten days or longer, we don't have, at this point, a mechanism where we can make sure they're working on their studies during the next ten days or longer, or developing some, talking about some citizenship traits that we can get to prevent this. So in the nineties, in nineteen ninety-three to two thousand, I was assistant principal at Denwoodie County. And this was before alternative education became popular in the state. When a kid got in trouble, it could be a big fight or whatever, everybody was expelled. If you're expelled from school, that's three hundred and sixty-five days before you can come back. And it's not like you can go to another division and say, well, I want to enter here. Most of those kids did not make it. And we don't, I don't think we want that. So as a preventative, I would like to have a program where it's off-campus, because when they get in trouble, I want them to understand and appreciate the high school. And you can't do it if they're there or they're home for ten days or longer. So they need to come back and have a program where they do their studies at a facility, like what I'm going to propose tonight. And then at some point in time, we bring them back. They earned their way back. It's not, you know, you ten days and you're going to go. I've done this. I've worked this at Colonial Heights. I've done this, I set it up in Mecklenburg. I did it at Buena Vista. It works. And it works, you know, I have been in this business now, this is my thirty-sixth year. And I have dealt with thousands of young boys and young ladies. And boys are, you know, do some stupid things up and through about the tenth grade. So, you know, sometimes you just got to have an alternative for them and make them realize what they've done wrong, and they turn out to be good people. I'd rather have a chance at them than miss out on it. And honestly, we have been about seventy-eight percent successful in getting them back. And they graduate, and they get a job, and they come back to live here. And they're good citizens because of having good role models. And I got a plan to have a couple people there that'll be good role models for them. And it's someplace where I can come in and check on them, because I got to tell them when they can go back. Now, I have, we've had, what, about thirteen fights in the first semester, haven't we? That's too many. And we can't keep sending them home and sitting there and not doing anything. So what I'm proposing tonight, folks, is up at the, I think it was the Dilwyn Primary School, where you got the library now, it renovated. I would like to have the opportunity to lease or rent one classroom there on the end. If you're facing the building, it would be the far right side. There's a door there, and JB and Ronnie, and who's the gentleman who's the recreation guy? Yeah, that fellow met us up there, gave us a tour of it. And you can see, you see the interest way that we're trying to work with. It's the first room on the left. Flip the next one. There's where you, right inside the door. One more. There you go. That red arrow indicates the door to the classroom one. And if you flip it again, now, those are the carousels where kids work out of. Now, these are the ones I had in Buena Vista. I didn't want y'all to get excited, I thought I put those things in there already. But I had my carpentry class. Made those things. And I think they did a pretty good job. And we got a carpentry class up here, so I'd like to get this thing started the first of February, because I have folks I need to get in. Help me see you, you wait. Started, I don't think you'll ever regret it. Can you hear me? Go get them. We don't let them ride a bus. We go get them, and we take them home. And every day that they miss is another day. They make it up. And they have to pass. Freshmen in there, a junior, sophomore, but they're all working on their studies. They have a teacher there and an aide. Thank you. And I honestly think that they're going to come out. I have seen this work so good that some of these kids do better in a program like this in school than they do in the regular school, because they're focused. Sometimes a child that doesn't have a lot of confidence in themselves will act out. They do stupid things. And we can get them straight, trust me. I've dealt with boys all my life, and I tell you, I got a good baton average. If we do this, we can help ourselves here. And a lot of the kids that graduate from Buckingham, I guarantee, stay here. Come back home like they should. And you got, goodness gracious, we got one of the best welding programs I've ever seen. I've never seen so many kids that can weld here. A number of things, ROTC, we got a lot of things to be proud of. I want these kids to be in those programs too. So I'm asking you tonight if you could work with me, and we'll rent it. I'll have a custodian go up there and clean it a couple times a week. The only thing that, you know, that might be a problem is that they got to go to the bathroom, so they would have to go to that only bathroom down there at the end of the hallway. But they'll be escorted, okay? And they'll, they'll, they'll earn their way back, I'll be honest with you. And I'm so proud of seeing this thing work, because I've seen it before. And we're going to have, we've got good people here that can help them out. And so I hope you, if you got any easy questions for me to answer?
Uh, yeah, Dr. Keeler, I was going to ask, as we ask some questions, Mr. Schumaker, if you could restart that, because we went through it rather quickly. I didn't know if any supervisors wanted to take a look at that as we think of some questions. Does anyone right now, gentlemen, have any questions for Dr. Keeler with what he has presented as we go through this PowerPoint, maybe a little bit slower so you can read it?
You guys did a nice job on this building. It looks like it's brand spanking new. Probably didn't look that good when you built it. But the library is outstanding. But it is a good, it's perfect, perfect for what we need.
I have a question for Dr. Keeler, but I have one for Mr. Palmer. I said, how about the transportation? You all with that right there?
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
And feeding them, we bring them the breakfast and their lunch. They start a little bit later, you give us some time, and we get them home. We release them early so that we can get them home and double back in case. And it works out well.
Dr. Keeler, are we talking about suspended students or expelled students?
Well?
There's a difference.
Well, they're going to be suspended students, because I can't, I can't, I can't expel kids. Only the board can. And so I'm hoping that when I take a child who could be expelled to the board, there's only two alternatives. The board is setting up, we're going to expel him, or we'll give him a chance to go to alternative ed. And he may be there for a year before he gets straightened out. Does that make sense?
Yes, sir.
Now, some of them could be ten days. Somebody gets a fight, they can spend their ten days at, you know, I call it community day school. That's just a nice name, but it's alternative. And I guarantee you, they're probably not going to want to come back after a ten-day stay. They brought, you know, they want to see their friends. They can't go to see a basketball game. They can't ride a school bus. They can't use their phone. It's all business. But you know what? The bottom line is that they turn out to be better people. State.
We're talking males and females, correct?
Yep, male and female.
Dr. Keeler, I have a question, sir. It's with regards to, has your school board formally endorsed this program?
They have, you know, not publicly, because I got to meet with them Wednesday, but I think they will endorse it. Yeah, they know about it.
And they support it, more or less?
Oh, yeah.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, they're all, they're all for this thing.
I've got a question, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, Supervisor Matthews?
Dr. Keeler, what avenue did you use, did the school division use prior to right now for alternative ed? Where did they house those students prior to right now?
You mean, where did I do it? Which schools?
No, what did they do in Buckingham? Where were these students housed, and where did? Where were, where were these students housed, and where did they, where were they taught for alternative ed in Buckingham County?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah. They are housed in the high school along with, uh, one room with credit recovery kids that are not in, in trouble, and probably some in-school suspension. That, that's not a good, that's not a good mix.
Well, you know, we have a public library that joins this building, and there's a lot of young children that attend reading and different programs at the library. So, I'm having a lot of concerns with this. Number one, if I was a parent, I'd have, I'd be asking this question also. Why should we turn that building loose to you? The second thing is, uh, how much ARFA money do you have left?
How much, you talk about federal funding? Yes, sir?
Yes. Yes.
I'm not sure how much I got left, but it was originally four point five million dollars.
That's right. Why couldn't you, why couldn't you arrange something? Aren't you down quite a few students in the division right now? Like in excess of a hundred and fifty?
Well, I'm not sure, uh, you know, I've only been here two months, but I, the last two months...
Well, if you're, if you're down that, if you're down, if you're down that many students, I would think you could find a place in the division that you could teach alternative ed. They've been doing it for years in Buckingham County?
Well, uh, I, I'm not sure they've been doing it like this. And you, you got a good point, but I just don't see, it's not gonna be effective with the way we got it now. And yet, and you're right. We're down some kids, but I'll give you an example. I think we're gaining some kids back. Month before last, we had, I think we were up four. This time, it looks like we're up another seven. I, I, as, as time people get confidence back in what you're doing, I think folks are starting to come home.
Dr. Keeler, I have a question, sir. In terms of an average number of suspended students or students in general that would be in this space, do you have any idea or forecast as to what that would look like?
Uh, we could start off February with three. I know. I doubt if it, I hope it wouldn't get more than five or six at a time, but you don't know until they get the program going.
Sure. And I have had a parent who reached out to me with regards to taking his or her young child in the same, not necessarily room, of course, but in the same area. But, um, does anyone else have any questions for Dr. Keeler about this issue?
How are the parents bought into this?
Parents that I have dealt with and other, you know, of course, this is new, this concept is new, but they have, uh, they have applauded the program.
Well, I mean, you know, it seems like a win-win for the parent, because, you know, you're still picking little Johnny or little Susie up every day, you know, and because they couldn't behave in a public school setting, now you're gonna put them in a private school setting. You're still gonna provide transportation for them. You know, my concern is, you forfeited that right. You know, if you can't behave in a public school setting, what are your parents gonna do? Because what happens if they get in this community center and they start breaking things in this, in this renovated building? Who's gonna be held liable for that? The school system?
Well, I guess so.
But then that still falls back on the taxpayer.
Well, I, I'll be honest with you. With the people that we have in mind running the thing, I, I don't see that happening. This is, this is tight. Program is run correctly, and I, I got confidence that it, it will be. It'll work.
I've got a question, Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Matthews, yes, sir. Sure. Go ahead.
You know, I've, you know, I'm all for alternative ed and to help, and for helping any student in, in Buckingham County get across that bridge to get them to a better place in their life. But this is a school division problem. It's not a county problem. And that building was not renovated to rent it to the school division. I'm just gonna say that. It's, it's got other things that go on in that, in that building on a daily basis. And I have a problem with that. I don't mind doing something on a temporary basis, but if you've got federal funds that are available to, to build a room, or buy a trailer, or whatever you have to do, house them in the school bus shop. There's a break room over there, I'm sure you could use that for something, if you're a teacher. Have you thought about, uh, teaching virtually for these students? Get them to a place where they, they can do that virtually. Uh, you know, you, let's think outside the box to see what we can come up with, but it looks like to me, you know, the federal government has provided an avenue for you guys to build an additional room or stuff in the division to house those in, in-house. It shouldn't be a county problem.
Well, I understand and I appreciate you, your opinion on it. I just don't think virtual's gonna work for these kids. They're not, they're not disciplined enough to, to stay with the program on it. So, uh, I, if there was another place I had that I thought would work, I would go ahead.
I'm gonna call.
And, uh, but, uh, just don't, I don't, I don't know of one. I'll be honest with you. And it's not gonna be effective the way we're doing it. What do you think, Patty?
No, we've got more.
Yeah.
One question I have, and then I'll call on Vice Chairman Chambers, is that for Mr. Carter, in terms of the space that we have allocated, do we have the space for such use with what has been already allocated, sir?
Are you talking about up here?
I'm referring, uh, this is for Mr. Carter.
Oh, yes, sir. There, um, based on what Todd is doing down there right now currently, there is more, there's space down there for this one classroom.
Okay. Vice Chairman Chambers?
I believe in the second change. I don't see why we shouldn't give it a shot. As the, the library is for the citizens of the county. These are citizens of the county. Just don't throw them to the woods 'cause they make a mistake. Who in your heaven made a mistake in life? I know I have.
I agree, Ms. Chambers.
I think, I think the kids need a second change.
Did you, did you want to add?
If we're willing to work with these kids, I think we should work with him and give him an opportunity to do this.
Supervisor Bryan?
Dr. Keeler, you know, there, there's a lot of logistics that need to be worked out with this. I'd, I'd like for you and maybe a couple of school board members to sit down with, Chairman, or Mr. Matthews and Mr. Chambers, and iron out all the details and come back to us, and maybe we can get this going as, as quick as we can.
Ma'am, can I speak?
Yes, sir. Supervisor Davis?
Well, I'm sitting here thinking about this the whole time, and myself was a troubled youth. I liked to fight. I don't know more, I got old, but very easily, if I had teachers that would've gave up on me, I could've been down another road. And if we give up on these kids, what are we saying about the county?
Yeah.
They're the future citizens, that maybe one of them might be sitting up here one day, so I think we ought to give it a shot.
Supervisor, thank you Supervisor Davis. So Supervisor Bryan, what you're proposing is to put maybe an ad hoc committee together of, uh, Vice Chairman Chambers and Supervisor Matthews, two school board members and staff as deemed appropriate. Would you be amenable to that, Dr. Keeler?
Absolutely.
Mr. Carter, are you good with that? Uh, board members, are you, are you all okay with that, gentlemen?
Mr. Carter, you as well.
Sure, with staff, yeah.
As the county administrator and, and staff.
And, um, do you want to include the county attorney to draw up documents?
Yes, sir, please.
And any of your staff that, uh, maybe Dr. Keeler would deem beneficial in that conversation? Okay, Supervisor Matthews, how do you feel about that, sir?
I'm fine to sit down with them and discuss it, but I don't think it should be a permanent situation. We will help them through this year with them starting right now, starting to look to the future and establish something within the school division. So, that's where I would be trying to focus and trying to get them something in their division, not in something that's a county building that is not designed to house students. That's the whole thing. We, I'm, you know, I told you before, I'm willing to stick my neck out for them this year, but we need to find someplace else other than the library and the community center for this scenario.
Okay, thank you Supervisor Matthews. So, can we entertain a motion to, to form this ad hoc committee, please?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Motion by Supervisor Bryan, seconded by Supervisor Davis, to form the said ad hoc committee with regards to item M. 1. Does anyone have any questions before we vote? All those in favor, raise your hand, aye. Those opposed? Supervisor Matthews?
Voting aye.
Okay, thank you. The motion carries seven to zero. Dr. Keeler, thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate it.
Our next item for presentations is item M. 4. Kelly Snotty, representing the Peter Francisco Soil and Water Conservation District, her annual update, and I know we were distributed with some information, so Ms. Snotty, we welcome you.
M. 2, Jordan.
I'm sorry, M. 2. I apologize.
M. 2 would be the DCR scenic rivers designation.
Yes, so we're gonna go with M. 2 first. My handwriting is a little bad. We're gonna, uh, hear from David Blount, and, uh, we're gonna consider the Department of Conservation and Recreation Scenic Rivers designation as M. 2. And, uh, welcome, David. Mr. Blount.
Yeah. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Thank you for your time on the agenda this evening and for, uh, adjusting your agenda for me this evening. Um, I am David Blount. I'm the Deputy Director and the Director of Legislative Services for the Thomas Jefferson Planning District Commission, uh, which is located in Charlottesville, includes Charlottesville, Albemarle, Green, Louisa, Flavanna, and Nelson Counties. I also serve as the Executive Director for the Virginia Association of Planning District Commissions, and, uh, want to congratulate you, Mr. Chairman, and, uh, on, on your service, and also to let everyone else know that in addition to your services, Board Chairman, and as I found out this evening, heading up the chamber, uh, he's also a member of the Board of Directors for VAPDC. Appreciate your work with us. So I'm here this evening to speak to you about the scenic river designation for portions of the James River. Uh, you do have some information in your packet that was provided to you, which, uh, gives a lot of details about the Department of Conservation and Recreation's scenic river program. But I wanted to spend just a few minutes to give you a little background about the program and what brings me here to you this evening. Uh, back in two thousand nineteen, Buckingham County, along with Albemarle and Flavanna and Nelson Counties, as well as the town of Scottsville, requested DCR to do a study, an analysis of the James River, uh, running from Allen's Creek at the Nelson County line all the way down to the Route 690 Bridge at Columbia, uh, to be studied for possible inclusion, uh, in the state scenic river system. Uh, at the time, uh, in two thousand nineteen, uh, DCR was only able to study a segment of that, uh, of that, uh, distance, and that was a twenty-mile portion, um, between the Warren Boat Ramp, or just upstream of the Warren Boat Ramp, uh, to the Route 15 Bridge at New Canton. And following that study, the recommendation was made for that segment to be included as a scenic river, uh, in the DCR designation. Uh, the Board of Supervisors at that time in December of two thousand nineteen, Buckingham County Board of Supervisors adopted a resolution, uh, in support of that designation. Uh, what happens is, uh, when a, when a recommendation is made, the designation actually has to be codified in the Code of Virginia, so there has to be a bill entered into the General Assembly session, uh, and then approved by the legislature. So your delegate, Delegate Matt Ferris, uh, introduced a bill in the two thousand twenty session of the General Assembly to include that segment, uh, in the scenic river designation. Uh, DCR came back then in the summer of two thousand twenty and did the rest of the study. They did from Allen's Creek, uh, to that boat ramp there east of Warren, and then they did, uh, a segment on the down riverside from New Canton, uh, all the way to Columbia. So, total distance there and those additional two segments of about, uh, an additional forty-five miles. So basically, this resolution would go on record, have you all going on record, uh, to, to support the designation of those two additional segments of the James that touch Buckingham County. Uh, really would be kind of bookending the segment that was, uh, that was adopted, uh, two years ago. So just briefly, scenic river designation, designed to protect and preserve the river, really kind of, uh, points out to the natural and scenic assets, the recreational assets, the geographical assets that the river, uh, contains, uh, does not give any, any rights to the public to enter onto private property, or to use public, private property, or to, to have any land use controls implemented by the state. So, so the resolution that's in your packet this evening, uh, is simply for you all to go on record again, uh, in support of designation of the James, uh, and these particular sections that I mentioned, uh, to be part of the state scenic river system.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Blount. And board members, it is, in your board packet is P. 7. It was moved up on the agenda, so if you turn to P. 7 in your board packets, there you will find the supporting documentation for this request from Mr. Blount. P. 7. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Blount with regards to this resolution and the designation
Also in your packet, gentlemen, there's a copy of the two thousand nineteen resolution that we adopted back in two thousand nineteen.
Do we have the current resolution in here?
Yes.
It's in the, it's the last page, Supervisor Bryan, under P. 7, and that, well, not, it's the second to the last page, sir.
That's the two thousand nineteen one.
You're looking for the, the resolution that we're looking to adopt? Copy of that?
Mm-hmm. Don't see it in here.
I don't see it as well.
Okay.
It wouldn't change much from the two thousand nineteen one.
Um, it, it's very similar to that. It's just, you know, again, changing the, um, the segments that were designated. Should, what I had at the thought was sent as part of the packet was a resolution to the General Assembly petitioning for scenic river designation of the segments of the James River.
Right. That's what we have, but it says the two thousand nineteen one.
Uh, was it, is this on letterhead? Because what I sent did not have. Okay. I don't know, I don't know what happened. I apologize.
So what you're saying, Mr. Blount, is that the resolution would be very similar to the two thousand nineteen resolution, but obviously worded differently based on the start and ending of the locations of the designation?
That is exactly correct, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
And the resolutions are needed so that the delegate has those, uh, you know, from the counties that are, that are affected, so that they can, uh, move the legislation
Anyone have any questions, gentlemen? You all want to take action on this request?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
A motion by Supervisor Bryan, seconded by Supervisor Allen, to, um, adopt the resolution with regards to the consideration of the scenic rivers designation from DCR. Does anyone have any questions before we vote? All in favor, raise your hand, aye. Those opposed, no. Supervisor Matthews?
Yes.
And the motion carries seven to zero. Thank you, Mr. Blount.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I will, uh, close the gap with Mr. Carter with regard to that resolution and, uh, his signature on that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Our next item is Ms. Kelly Snotty, Peter Francisco Soil and Water Conservation District, with her annual update, and she did distribute some information to us, so Ms. Snotty, welcome.
Thank you. What I handed out to you earlier tonight was just our annual plan of work. Yes. And that was for our fiscal, our program year of two thousand twenty-one, which ended in June of twenty-one. So typically, what I give you updates on kind of crosses over between our program year and our fiscal year. Follow our district request of time tonight to give you an update on what we've been doing the, over the past year. Uh, we want to just remind you that we're here as a resource for you as a board, for you as a county, as you make decisions going forward in the next year, and for the citizens as well. We are here for whatever you may need. We are governed by an elected board of directors ourselves. We have two elected from each county and one appointed with a variety of associate directors. Have, for Buckingham, James McDaniel Jr., and Kevin Dunn as our elected directors, and Barbara Teepel as our appointed director. For our associate directors, we have our partnering agency personnel from Virginia Cooperative Extension and 4H, Jennifer Ligon and Ruth Wallace. And for representing Cumberland, we have Todd Smith and Terry Seal, who are our chairman and vice chairman. We have Amber Taylor as our director representative from Virginia Cooperative Extension. She is the Cumberland office. Our associate directors for Cumberland are Verdi Mae Jamerson and Linda Eens. Linda Eens is Cumberland 4H agent. Staff in our office are Sherry Ragland as district manager, myself as conservation specialist, Elise Corbin as our education specialist, and our recently newly full-time hire of the... Olivia Leatherwood as our conservation technician, who came on in October. So, we're very excited to have her. Yep, that slide that's up on your screen now shows you different pictures of what you can see typically with our agricultural program. We offer cost share program to do conservation practices that are geared towards water quality improvement. A lot of our goals are to reach those Chesapeake Bay TMDL goals for 2025. We have specific practices geared to help with different varieties of, of things that are needed on our agricultural producers' farms or on landowners' properties. We have a, yep, so this, between last year and this year's funding, we have a total of 31 projects that are ongoing at this time. Seven of those projects have been completed in the last four months. Total funding approved for projects so far this fiscal year and carried over from last fiscal year for agricultural programs is $950,000, and this is all for Buckingham and Cumberland producers. Still have funding available for projects this fiscal year. So, if you know any producers or landowners who have questions and want to talk about what might be eligible for them, send them our way. We take applications continuously, and we, we can discuss potential programs at any time, so that we can be ready when funding is available. Next slide. We have a cost share program for residential practices. This is for pumpouts and septic system repairs. We have a, been extended our grant through TMDL, through the Department of Environmental Quality Program, for the Slate River watershed. This area of residents are eligible for 50% to 80% assistance based on income level through a federally funded project grant. This is for pumpouts and system repairs. For outside of those watersheds, for the other portions of Buckingham and for Cumberland County, we have a smaller local grant that only offers 50% on pumpouts, not for repairs, just for the pumpouts. This far, this fiscal year, we have approved over $30,000 in cost share for pumpouts and alternative system installations in the Slate River watershed. And we have approved almost $4,000 in cost share for 21 pumpouts for residents outside of that area in the rest of Buckingham and Cumberland. Olivia is in charge of that program, and she is welcome to, for you to give her a call and send anybody her way who is interested in a septic system pumpout. We have a Virginia Conservation Assistance Program. This is a VCAP program, this is an urban program. So, we don't do a lot of urban here in Buckingham and Cumberland, we tend to be more rural. But for your soil and water districts that are in bigger towns like Richmond and Charlottesville, you have a lot of stormwater runoff, you have a lot of impervious surfaces. So, that's the type of water quality that they're improving. So, this program is for rain gardens, rainwater harvesting cisterns, impervious surface removal, permeable pavers, green roofs, those types of projects. That funding is handled by a committee in Richmond. We can pull in interested landowners and work up an informational packet, and then that would go to Richmond for them to review cost share dollars there. It doesn't get handled in-house with us, but the option is there for areas that have a lot of stormwater runoff, that aren't typically your agricultural issues that we see. We have, I do erosion sediment control program plan reviews for the county. So, this year, working with Lynn and Nikki, I have reviewed six plans and consulted on a few site visits as needed. Moving on into our education programming. So, in addition to the cost share and the fieldwork that we do with our landowners, we also do programming for youth and adults. Schools and teachers can request programs with us. They are all SOL complimentary programs. Our website has a list of programs that we offer and which SOLs they correlate with. We often partner with other agencies, our Cooperative Extension Office, our 4H Office, our Department of Forestry offices, to work with and make these programs happen. We go into the school systems, we can do field days, we can do field trips, we work with estate parks to have field days there. Elise Corbin is our education coordinator, and she has all of her, her lesson plans and activities already listed out, so teachers can go and see what it is that she can come in and do. A lot of our programs are very complimentary to what's already been taught in the classroom, giving them a hands-on feel, getting them out, outside. The programs leases offered this year mainly revolved around erosion, pollinators, the water cycle, biological, chemical, and physical water quality monitoring, and she works with our Envirathon coaches with training topics and preparation for the competitions that are coming up in April and May. For our adults, this year, we hosted a farm field day with Virginia Cooperative Extension, Department of Forestry, and the James River Association in Cumberland, and we did our awards and recognition program there in the field, since we haven't been able to have in-person recognition meetings lately. We offered a booth at the Farm Fest at the Historic Village, and we manned a booth at the State Fair. So, hopefully, next year coming up, we'll be doing some more field days and getting everybody outside and moving. Next slide. We offer college scholarships annually to students in both Buckingham and Cumberland Counties. You must be a full-time student currently enrolled in or already a college freshman level. The district begins advertising in January, so you should have hopefully seen something come out. If you haven't, please reach out to Elise and ask. Applications are due back to us in March. Students should be majoring in Natural Resources or Environmental Studies. Our 2021 scholarship, we had three recipients. Our Buckingham scholarships were awarded to Amanda Bryan, who's attending Virginia Tech, studying agribusiness, and Maura Miles, who is attending Norfolk State University, majoring in biology. Next slide. And, our Cumberland scholarship was awarded to Jordan Newman, who is attending Virginia Tech with a major in agribusiness. So, most years, we have two different camps that we offer. We offer Youth Conservation Camp, and we offer Forestry Camp, which is now called Camp Woods and Wildlife. And, with Youth Conservation Camp and Forestry Camp, we sponsor students to attend these camps. For Youth Conservation Camp, I have been a camp counselor there myself for the last probably eight years now. The Youth Conservation Camp and the Forestry Camp, the counselors are the staff that you see. They're your soil and water staff, your Department of Forestry staff, your Natural Resource Conservation Service staff. So, we get to be big kids the whole week with the students, learning all the good things about natural resources, being outside, floating the river, learning about what makes a good steward of the land. So, this year, we had a virtual camp. So, they combined Youth Conservation Camp and Camp Woods and Wildlife into one week of natural resource learning on the computer. I taught topography and watersheds, and it's so much funner when you have real pencil and paper than it is on a computer. But, we still reached students across the state, talking to them about our natural resources. Forestry Camp, give you an idea of what they usually get to do. Our Envirathon competition, we have local high school students who participate in this competition. It's a natural resources competition where they are tested on soils, forestry, aquatics, wildlife, and a current specific environmental issue, and they prepare an oral presentation where they solve a real-life problem that they're given. The only requirement is a minimum of five high school students and one chaperone. Both Buckingham and Cumberland have teams for this year. The Buckingham High School team is coached by Mr. Andrew Schmidt, and the Cumberland High School team is coached by Mr. Josh Fleener and Ms. Linda Eames, our 4H agent. And if anybody has any questions about the Envirathon, Elise will be happy to help you. We have a link on our website that shows you more about what's going on, but as a group, they study all these topics and then go and put their knowledge to the test. We had a poster contest. So, each year, we have a poster contest. Last year, the theme was healthy forests, healthy communities. We had 148 participants from kindergarten to 12th grade. You can see all the artwork on our website, but for tonight, I'm just going to have a picture of the first, first place winner of each category, and we'll show them to you as we go through, and I will read to you all the other winners as I go through. So, get ready, here we go. So, K through 1, first place was Emma Operts, a homeschooler. You can see her poster on the screen. Second, the second through third grade category, first place is William Davis from the Central Gene Christian School, second went to Louis Garrett, a homeschooler, and third to Riker Seba, a homeschooler. The fourth through sixth grade category, first place went to Kinsley Baggett of Cumberland Middle, second to Haley Frank of Cumberland Middle, third to Ryland Edwards of Buckingham Middle, and honorable mention to Carly Capps of Cumberland Middle. The seventh through ninth grade category, first place went to Kaylee Price of Buckingham High, second to Lauren Webb of Buckingham High, third to Andrew Doryer of Buckingham High, and honorable mention to Devin Lane Lamont, Buckingham High, Buckingham Middle, excuse me. The 10th through 12th grade category, first place went to Lillian McConkey of Cumberland High, second to Callie Dominic of Cumberland High, third to Kristen Caleb of Cumberland High, and an honorable mention to Gabrielle Bernardo of Cumberland High. The district forwarded Lillian McConkey's poster to the state-level competition. She placed first at the state-level competition, and she has now been forwarded to the national level for her poster, to the National Association of Conservation Districts. So, we are extremely excited for Lillian's poster and her accomplishments in that. For our awards, with our farm field day that we held in May with multiple agencies, we shared information on pasture weeds, pond management, conservation practices, and planting trees and buffers. This was at the farm of Michael Ozil in Cumberland. In conjunction with that, we recognized our Envirathon teams, our poster contest winners, our 2020 Conservation Teacher of the Year, which was Mr. Andrew Schmidt, your Buckingham welding teacher, and FFA advisor, and our 2019 Clean Water Farmer Award recipient. That was Mr. Michael Ozil of Cumberland, whose farm that we were at. Each year, the Department of Conservation and Recreation offers a Clean Water Farmer Award, which recognizes Virginia producers who are enacting practices on their properties that positively impact soil and water quality. Michael Ozil was the recipient of this award. His farm has been managed through three generations, and was first established by his grandfather in 1947, his father in 95, and Michael himself became involved in 2013. It totals 110 acres, and the commercial beef cattle herd consists of 17 brood cows and one bull. The property is located in the Willis River watershed and drains to the James River. After the most recent surface water exclusion project completed in the winter of 2019 and 2020, all water bodies on the farm have now been excluded through the assistance of the conservation programs. He's looking forward to his next planned steps, which are working with our Cumberland Extension Agent Amber Taylor to improve the grass stands in his pastures. He's been a good sport at allowing us to have farm field days out there and bring people out to look at the trees that are planted in his buffer. The buffer on his farm, we fenced it out through our program, and the James River Association came back through with funding through the James River Buffer Program and planted native hardwood trees. That is a program that's ongoing now for the James River area, and it's, seems to be very well received. The district sent, you can change, yep, there you go. We sent in a nomination this year to the Virginia Association of Soil and Water Conservation Districts for the 2021 Conservation Education Teacher of the Year for the secondary school level, and our nominee won for the state level. This is Mr. Josh Fleener, he's the agriculture teacher at Cumberland High School. He's served as the coach for the Envirathon team for the last two years. His first year of coaching, the team took second place at the area competition and went on to compete at the state level. He not only teaches agriculture classes, he also serves as FFA advisor, football coach, and is part of a mentoring group called Life Push LLC. He stated, "Helping others shine a light on their God-given talents is an honor in and of itself." Our watershed, uh, excuse me, our watershed dam program is, continues to go as it's going. We have been, this year, all the dams have been mowed, general maintenance has been performed twice, they've had their annual owners' inspections completed. Our next round of engineering inspections for, I think it's seven dams on the list this year, is scheduled for a couple weeks from now. We, all the districts that have flood control dams have received funding for remote monitoring devices that can be installed on the dams to help us measure rainfall data and lake level rise as part of the emergency action planning, and you can do that from the computer without having to go out. So, we have been approved for funding now for all 17 of our dams, and we're working towards getting that lined up to get those installations done. We've had some repair work needed on entrance roads this year, so we're taking care of that, and we currently have one lake undergoing maintenance right now, and it is empty, but we will hopefully be taking care of that soon. That sums up what we've been doing so far. As always, we thank you for your time tonight, we thank you for your continued support of the Soil and Water District, and we hope we can be an asset to you.
Thank you, Ms. Snotty. Does anyone have any questions for Ms. Snotty? Well, we thank you for coming and all your, and your team's hard work. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our next item is a presentation of a plaque to Mr. Dabney Cruz for his years of service on the Planning Commission. He and his family were unable to attend tonight, so we're going to postpone that until the February meeting by consensus of the board, if everyone is okay with that, supervisors. Okay. We will now switch gears and move to our public hearings. We have four public hearings docked tonight, and the first one is N1, Transient Occupancy Tax Ordinance Amendment per General Assembly Action Amending the Code of Virginia to Revise Transient Occupancy Taxes to Provide Tax Reporting When a Room is Booked Through Accommodations Intermediary Such as Expedia, Travelocity, and Price Sign, etc. Mr. Carter, could you address this, please, before we open the hearing?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, as you stated before, that we need to change our ordinance to come in compliance with the state ordinance. On the second page is a revised copy of our ordinance. I won't read the whole thing because it's got all those codes and definitions, but the first four sections of the ordinance, which you really need, where it says, whereas Virginia Code 15 dot 2 dash 1427 and 15 dot 2 dash 1433 enable a local governing body to adopt, amend, or codify ordinancees or portions thereof, and whereas, at the 2021 General Assembly passed Senate Bill 1398, amending the Virginia Code to revise transient occupancy taxes to provide for tax reporting when a room is booked through an accommodation or intermediary such as Expedia, and whereas, the Board of Supervisors wish to amend the Buckingham County Transit Occupancy Ordinance to comply with the state law. So, we're just trying to bring our ordinance in compliance with the state has changed there to, based off Senate Bill 1398.
Thank you, Mr. Carter. Mr. Schumacher, do we have anyone signed up?
Yes, sir, we do not have anybody signed up to speak tonight.
Okay, so, I'll open the public hearing, and then we will close the public hearing with no speakers signed up. So, supervisors, gentlemen, do you all have any questions or concerns about N1, about the ordinance amendment, as we need to take action on that?
Make a motion, do we go ahead and adopt it?
Second.
A motion by Supervisor Allen, seconded by Supervisor Brian, that we adopt the amendment to the transient occupancy tax ordinance. Does anyone have any questions before we vote? All in favor, aye, raise your right hand, raise your hand. Those opposed, Supervisor Matthews?
Yes.
The motion carries seven to zero to amend the ordinance. Our next public hearing is regarding N2, which deals with an ordinance regulating or prohibiting the making of fires per the appropriate code of Virginia. Mr. Carter, could you address this before we open the hearing, please?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, due to the dry conditions last month, I asked you to adopt an emergency ordinance that gave the county administrator the authority to set a burn ban in the county without Board Supervisors' approval. You did adopt that emergency ordinance, and it was only good for 90 days. The public hearing tonight is to give the county administrator the same authority to declare a burn ban in the county as he or she determines the need. Last month, you did it on a temporary basis, but this ordinance for tonight will allow you to just, be allowed to done permanently, and allows us to declare a ban quicker because we want to wait for you to convene at your bounty meetings to declare a burn when necessary. The county administrator, of course, will still consult all the other agencies to determine if it was a good time to set a burn ban or not. But, basically, this is giving the county administrator the authority to declare a burn ban in the county without having to wait for the Board Supervisors' meeting to take place.
Mr. Carter, thank you, sir. I'll open the public hearing. Mr. Schumacher, do we have anyone signed up who would like to speak, sir?
No, sir, we do not.
Okay, seeing that no one has signed up, we will close. Okay, seeing that no one has signed up, we will close the public hearing. Uh, board members, fellow supervisors, what is your pleasure regarding this ordinance?
Mr. Chairman, a move that we adopt the ordinance.
A motion by Supervisor Bryant, seconded by Supervisor Bryant, that we adopt this ordinance as read and as presented. Any questions before we vote? All in favor, yes, sir, Supervisor Allen?
I got one question.
Yes, sir.
Right now, we got a burn law in effect. Uh, is it back to where they can burn?
Yeah, we've lifted that ordinance.
I just want to make sure that that's publicly put out before we get going.
Yes, sir, town, we adopted it, it rained like and snowed for the last month, so.
I just want to make sure because I hadn't, and a lot of people hadn't heard it. So that's good, so this just makes it where you can do it without us having a big meeting.
That's right, that's right.
Good enough, alright.
Thank you Supervisor Allen.
I know.
So the motion is by Supervisor Bryant, seconded by Supervisor Bryant, to adopt the ordinance. Does anyone have any questions before we vote? All in favor, raise your hand to adopt the ordinance. Those opposed, Supervisor Matthews?
Yes.
Okay, the motion carries unanimously to adopt the ordinance, seven to zero. The next public hearing regards case number 21 dash SUP 291. The landowner applicant is John E. Yoder requesting to obtain a special use permit for the purpose of operating a commercial sawmill that's property located on Tax Mat 113, Parcel 10, containing approximately 9.4 acres at 541 Allen's Lake Road in Dilwyn in the Curdsville Magisterial District. So, um, I assume we do have right amount of people signed up. And the first thing that we're going to do is hear from Ms. Edmundston. And then if the applicant so wishes to address his project. And then we will hear from the public and the public will have three minutes each. So, Ms. Edmundston, thank you.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Um, as our chairman reiterated a bit earlier, this case is 21 SUP 291. John E. Yoder at 541 Allen's Lake Road, Dilwyn, Virginia is the landowner and applicant. Um, the applicant wishes to obtain a special use permit for the purpose of operating a commercial sawmill and that is the purpose for the public hearing this evening. You may remember this case from an introduction at the December 13th Board of Supervisors' meeting. Um, this case came to the attention of the zoning administrator by way of complaint. After investigating, investigation and meeting with the landowner, it was discovered that a sawmill was operating in violation of the zoning ordinance. The initial complaint was made in early Ju- July 2021 and the building was discovered, but no sound of a saw operating at that time. However, the sawmill was operating when another complaint was made in late July 2021. After discussion with Mr. Yoder, it was discovered he was purchasing logs timbered offsite and operating a commercial sawmill. At this time, Mr. Yoder was informed that he was not operating in compliance with the zoning ordinance and was instructed to cease operations immediately. After further review of the permit records, Mr. Yoder obtained a building permit in June 2021 for a 40 by 60 building for the purposes of farm use as indicated on his zoning building permit application. The sawmill was operating in this 40 by 60 building. Mr. Yoder has provided information to the Planning Commission explaining the intent and nature of the request for the permit in June 2021, which was not for agricultural farm use. But at the time of the application for permit, his intent was to operate a commercial sawmill. Uh, Mr. Yoder is available this evening to address questions and concerns. And I'll turn the mic over to him.
Thank you, Ms. Edmundston. Mr. Yoder, would you like to address your, um, application, please, sir?
Yes, um, is there, I guess, in the meeting a month ago, uh, we had talked about, uh, conditions the Planning Commission set up. And those were a number of trucks. Um, define a truck as? Vida defines it? Or, or what, what did you want me to?
So, Mr. Yoder, if you could explain your project to us um, as to what you would like to do at the property. And, um, we might have a few questions before we open up the public comment. But if you could just give us a, uh, simple project summary as to what you would like to do there, sir?
Yes, um, just operate a sawmill, small, very small. Uh, me, my family. A good number where I think would be, uh, three truckload of logs a week, three to five. Uh, that's about where I see it. Currently, I have a portable sawmill. That's all the bigger than I, I expect to get. I don't expect to do any expansions. I do, was doing a good bit of, uh, small orders, custom orders. That meant a lot of, uh, small pickups came in to pick up lumber. That's about all I have. The, the Planning Commission, uh, gave me conditions of, uh, four trucks per week. I agreed to their conditions. They were common, pretty fast. And, but after thinking about it later, um, the conditions they gave me with four trucks per week. They were talking about any truck coming in, any vehicle coming in would be a truck. I would very much like if we would not count pickups, heavy-duty pickups, trailers, or tannemaxes. I was also buying logs from smaller outfits that have tannems. And if I get four load a week from them, that would not be sufficient. Uh, there was also mention about my driveway. The end of my driveway is not on my property. I have talked to the owner of that property. He says he has no objection of me using it, but he does not want to deed it over to me. Um, I'm asking if the Board of Supervisors, uh, grants me to operate a sawmill there. I would put in a new driveway, um, right away. But I would need permits. I don't know what is all involved. I would have to also change my septic system because where the driveway would run in would go right over the drain field. So there's a good bit of work involved there. But I would start working on that as soon as I can draw permits, as soon as I can have contractors and excavators.
Okay, well, thank you, Mr. Yoder. Thank you for being here. Does any, um, member of the board have any questions for Mr. Yoder or Ms. Edmundston before we open the public comment, the public hearing?
What was your definition for the trucks that you had, Ms. Edmundston?
Supervisor Allen, we discussed a definition for truck, um, by way of what was given in the narrative from Mr. Yoder. Um, he stated the traffic this sawmill will cause will be log trucks, mostly semis, some straight jobs, pickups with trailers and flat beds hauling lumber away. That was the definition that we used provided by Mr. Yoder last month.
What's any, any vehicle hauling?
Excuse me?
Any vehicle hauling wood would be counted as a truck.
That's what it would appear. Clarification may come from Mr. Yoder.
Does that answer your question Supervisor Allen?
That question, pretty much, yeah.
Okay, does any other supervisor have any other questions before we open the public hearing for Mr. Yoder or Ms. Edmundston?
Uh, you did say that you, you had the permission to use the driveway. Is that for commercial or just for private use?
I did tell Mr. Allen what I'm. I did tell Kendall Allen what I'm doing. He said he does not object. He just doesn't want to deed it over to me.
Uh, I got different, I'm different. I'm not got in writing where he doesn't want to give you the right to use it as a commercial. And that means to me that you don't have a permit for driveway. Because he had no commercial use. He gave you permission to use it as a private driveway. Part of making a commercial sawmill. That's when it became no, he would not give you an easement or the right of way to use the driveway. So to me, that part of the, your, uh, SUP is gone.
Danny, do you have a copy of that with you?
Sir?
Do you have a copy of that with you?
Yes, I do. I'll have to look it back up because Nikki got one too, I think.
Do you have it, Ms. Edmundston?
Oh, you got one too. That's it, Carter.
Yeah, that way we can all read it and then enter it as part of the SUP.
Part of the record.
Yeah, part of the record.
While we're reading the letter, um, gentlemen, do you?
Can you maybe read it out loud, Mr. Allen?
Yeah.
Uh, this email is from Kendall and Kathy Allen. Uh, 853 Twin Creek Road, Buckingham, Virginia. A few months ago, I gave John Yoder verbal permission to use the driveway on my property, Allen's Lake Road. At that time, he wanted to widen the driveway, driveway, which I had no problem with and has now come back and wants me to deed him a right of way. I am not interested in giving him a deeded right of way or an easement for commercial or business use of the driveway. Kendall Allen dated January 8th, 2022. Okay.
Anyone else have any questions before we open the public hearing?
Right, that, that was.
In lieu of that, Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Bryant.
Uh, SUP 291 is not valid because he has no, um, entryway for that SUP. You agree, Mr. Allen?
Right, well, then it's another issue about the building. It's a agriculture building and then now he's using it for a com- uh, commercial use.
Commercial use.
And he needs to get another permit for that. And then the other, other issues of mine is that I don't like, I don't like all the traffic on Allen's Lake Road. It's a small road. When they haul the gravel up there to fix your place up, they end up having the state have to work on the road because it caved in and ended the curve. Now on the other curve, I just talked to Vida about it and, uh, I haven't been down and looked at it yet, but that's starting to cave in. So to me, we don't want no heavy trucks running on that road because it's going to fall apart. One, two, you got children and older folks on that road that I don't think we need trucks on that road. I don't mind helping you find another place to put it, but I just don't think that's the right place.
Mr. Chairman? Um, let me call on, uh, but thank you Supervisor Allen. Let me call on County Attorney Wright. Did you have a remark, sir?
Should.
Okay.
Thank you.
Supervisor Davis?
Yes, uh, I rode up there Saturday and looked at the road and I have concerns also with track and trails and all being on that narrow road.
Alright, anything else before we open up the hearing? Okay, so we're going to open up the hearing for this case. Um, Mr. Schumacher will call those by who have signed up and we probably have some letters and voicemails as well. And please be in mind, you have three minutes, there's a timer. And, um, after you finish your sentence, when the three-minute bell goes off, that will be it. So, Mr. Schumacher?
Yes, sir, we have eight people signed up to speak tonight. Uh, first person will be Jay Alvin Thomas Jr., District 2.
Good evening, my name is Jay Alvin Thomas Jr. from District 2. I live at 1112 Thomas Road, Dilwyn, Virginia. I own land across the road from, uh, Mr. Yoder's property. Uh, I am in support of, uh, his request and special use permit, uh, 291. Uh, I understand the concern for the road. I've measured the road. The measured road is only two inches difference between the width of Allen's Lake Road and Thomas Road that I live on. And, and Thomas Road has regular, has track and trailer traffic on it. But I would, I would urge you to, uh, approve this SUP. I know we've got, uh, some last minute discussion came up tonight that sort of talked a lot of people off guard. But, uh, I would encourage you to try to work with Mr. Yoder. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. Next up, we have Roy Martin, District 7.
Hi, I live at Allen's Lake Road, 860. He was talking about the road. That cow was, uh, collapsed at the curve. It had really nothing to do with weight. It was the water. It was the wrong way. Now, crossing hatchets, or whatever creek that is. If it's not safe enough for a logging truck, it scares the heck out of me. I have a big truck, trailers. And what I found is when you turn onto Allen's Lake Road, you got two logging trucks length before you have to take a sharp 90-degree right. Then you have approximately two more logging trucks length before you have to take a sharp left. That's all uphill. The only problem I have with a logging truck is I got behind one once. And driving home at five miles an hour wasn't too much fun. But this is a one-man operation. It's not like it's a huge employment and so forth. As far as, uh, I'm not a lawyer. But the 15 years I've been there, that driveway's been the same. And I think if you talk to a lawyer, it would be an easement by prescription. But I don't want to do the law. You had someone talk about education. You know, the Amish build their own schools, transport their students, hire their teachers. They don't get any benefits, no tax breaks. And they all pay the same taxes as all of us. I would like to see John get his sawmill. It, when it ran, I never heard it. Actually, I hear the wood chipper once in a while when the wind's blowing. I'd be quite pleased if he could have his, uh, sawmill. Maybe I could get some free lumber. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Next up, we have Brooke Rush, District 7.
Good evening, my name is Brooke Rush. I am John's closest neighbor at 617 Allen's Lake Road. I am in support of him getting his special use permit, um, for a sawmill. I don't have an issue with it. My kid would be one of those kids that would be on the road and he'll just have to learn how to work with the traffic because, you know, it's a road. Um, so the traffic that has been down the roads before didn't seem to be a huge issue. They go slow enough. Um, I didn't see an issue with the traffic or the amount that he's requesting. I would like to see him get approved for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rush. Next, we have Cheryl Martin, District 7.
Um, I'm Cheryl Martin. I live at 860 Allen's Lake Road. And, um, I'm in support of John Yoder's special permit. Um, again, I haven't heard any of the noise or any of that pollution. But on Allen's Lake Road, there are tow trucks, there are, you know, cattle trucks, there are golf carts, there are, you know, ATVs. People use the road. We walk. We, you know, pay attention. But that's where he lives. That's his livelihood. That's the job that he wants to do. And like Roy said, it's not a big operation. We don't have a bunch of employees that will be on it. And I think he's been respectful and the buildings that he- And I think he's been respectful and the buildings that he have been, that he has built have been, um, you know, excellent quality. You know, the workmanship is there and I'm sure he's going to have to get the right permits and do what he has to. But I would like to see him be approved. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Martin.
Next up, we have Crystal Martin, District Seven.
Hi, good evening, everybody, my name is Crystal Martin and I'm a resident of District Seven. I'm speaking tonight in opposition of the proposed commercial sawmill special use permit on Allen's Lake Road. The proposed location is not at all suitable for regular and routine commercial traffic. I've read all the transcripts from the planning commission meetings. The focus on many of those comments from those meetings were noise. I would like to focus my comments on neighborhood safety and overall zoning suitability. First, there are four children under the age of 18 other than the applicant's children that reside on that road. In addition, there are at least a dozen other children that frequent that road on a regular basis. Some of those children are mine and so this certainly matters to me. As this is a dead-end road, many of those children walk or ride bikes along the edge of the roadway pretty regularly. It's also not an uncommon occurrence to find many of them playing in the creek during the hot summer months. When you turn from Thomas Road onto Allen's Lake Road, the hill is pretty steep, crosses a creek and rolls into some pretty significant S-curves. Now imagine an 80,000 or 90,000 pound, fully loaded, 70-foot-long log truck coming down that road and meeting a kid on a bicycle. That in itself is a recipe for disaster. The road is very narrow. I went yesterday myself and measured it. The widest part I could find is 18 feet of pavement edge to edge. Given the term radius, radius of a tractor-trailer, any truck would take up a majority of the road approaching through both of those curves. There's been a lot of degradation to the sides of the pavement and in some spots, we found it was just 16 foot, nine inches from the pavement edge to edge. It would certainly make for a mess for anyone, including some elderly drivers in that neighborhood, to meet a logging truck regularly. I'm not opposed to business opportunities in this county. We certainly need things that increase our tax base and benefit our citizens. However, I am also concerned that if we allow this on Allen's Lake Road, then the county is setting a dangerous precedent that you can build a house here, but who knows? Somebody might come without bothering to file any of the appropriate permits first and build something else. It could be another house, it could be anything, hazardous waste, a filling station, anything. That's not the spirit and purpose of zoning at all. The business is right, the location is dangerous and wrong. Please vote no. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Martin.
Samantha Worm, District Seven.
Good evening, I'm Samantha Worm. I live 434 Allen's Lake Road, which is, I guess, the second closest house. As Crystal said before me, the problem is not the noise or that we don't want John to be successful, but the location is not ideal. Coming home today, um, as we all said, in the S-curves, it's a blind spot and you can't see who's coming. So, a logging truck coming down the steep hill into the S-curve cannot see many of my neighbors that fly down Allen's, Allen's Lake Road and that's just asking for an accident to happen. I also watched last month's meeting, um, and there was an inaccurate count of children. Kelby and I have one child and plan for more and, um, I don't know if you know this, but our whole immediate family lives on that road. And so, um, we're expecting to keep it like the good old days and have her be able to walk to her grandparents. She has also watched on that road, um, while we were at work all day, five days a week. And so, we just like to keep it how it is. We walk that road, um, ride bikes on that road. And so, I, I would not like for a sawmill to be beside my house. All for him being a successful small businessman, just not on our road. I'd like to keep our, um, our road how it is and able to, for the children to play. I think I counted it today and there are about 23 children under the age of 18 on that road regularly, um, playing, um, four-wheelers. And like I said, I would hate for a child, um, without a helmet on his four-wheeler to be flying down Allen's Lake Road and meet a tractor-trailer. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Worm.
Kelby Worm, District Seven.
Hey, I'm Kelby Worm, um, San Francisco husband, second closest to John. Let's see, one thing's strange that we don't mind John's a neighbor, but as when he comes, you know, for a sawmill down that road is very, very unsafe. While I've been working on log trailers and trucks for 13 years and I know what they're capable of and I've done construction and you got two coal pipes there that's, you figure 80,000 pounds going off the top of that on a daily basis. That is not a very good idea. You got to realize too, the, just say that pipe does bust. My grandma has a heart attack or some kid breaks their bones or need emergency exit. There's no possible way that our emergency vehicle, ambulance-wise, fire truck-wise, can get back through there when the pipe's there. There's a lot of things you got, you know, plain to fact. We walk up and down the road a lot, you know, we just... It's, it's not a very good place for it. Like I say, we're willing to help in any way possible, but just for a sawmill in that location is not a very good idea. And just keep that in mind, you know, people die in crashes every day. Just, you know, I don't want to lose my little kid or family in a photo log truck.
Thank you, Mr. Worm.
Our next is Ronald Dunkum, District Seven.
I'm Ronald Dunkum, I live on 682 Allen's Lake Road. First of all, the pipe you were referring to that had the problem, we've had problems with that before, way before John ever come there. Because Bill King told me they were going to fill in that, uh, low ground that while they had the water thing years and years ago. So, he didn't cause that with heavy trucks. Another thing is, I didn't hear John say anything about tractor-trailers. He said tandems or pickups with trailers. And I wonder why this letter didn't come before the planning commission, um, meeting. It was after, in January, you said. So, it looked like if somebody didn't want commercial stuff, he should have gotten the information before the planning commission. One big problem I had was, one person should not be on the planning committee and the board of supervisors that has to approve it. I think Mr. Allen needs to be excused from voting on this issue. Another thing, I was very upset with the way the meeting was handled. The chairman was not in charge of the meeting. There were stipulations brought up, discussed, and everybody looked to Mr. Allen. He didn't want to vote for that, so they added more. Nobody... Well, Mr. Allen didn't agree with that, so they stuck some more stipulations on it. Until finally, Mr. Allen said, yeah, he'd go along with it. Then they voted on it. That, to me, is not democracy. You can shake your head all you want.
I didn't vote for it, thank you.
Mr. Dunkum, if you'll continue, please.
There's no doubt in my mind that a lot of these stipulations wouldn't have been put on there if Mr. Allen had not been at the meeting. And he talked about safety and Ms. Worm talked about a blind spot. And if she's talking about down at near Bond's, uh, curve, right that Bond's mailbox, I personally cut that, uh... The state cut it years and years ago and some of the sprouts come back. I have cut it twice personally, myself, and I cut it before, uh, the first frost this year. So, I don't know what blind spot she's seeing now. In the planning commission, uh, we have, if my correct is, count is correct, we have nine families in there. One of them is a renter, not a, uh, landlord. Five people came and spoke in favor.
Mr. Dunkum, thank you for your, thank you for your time, sir. The three minutes is up, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, that's all that we have signed up and we did not receive any voicemails or public comments via email for this subject.
Okay, so that being the case, that completes our public hearing for this issue and now we will, uh, supervisors will discuss this and ask questions of staff or applicant. Does any supervisors have any questions? Hold, 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 hold on one second, Mr. Yoder.
Um, Supervisor Miles, we did receive a couple of emails that came in afterwards that, um... I just want to make it clear, we have them here. They were not in support of the, uh, S U P.
Would the board like to hear those emails read aloud, that, the correspondence?
Just pass them around.
Okay, um, but could you read those, Mr. Carter?
Yeah.
Please, thank you.
Yes, the first one is from Evelyn Bryant. It says, "Dear sirs, I am writing you today to express my concern about the proposed commercial sawmill operation on Allen, Allen's Lake Road. I'm extremely supportive of the expansion of small businesses in our county. However, the proposed location of the sawmill in question is residential to the fullest degree. I'm sure that each of you are familiar that Allen's Lake Road is a quiet neighborhood that stretches about one mile to its dead end. As a child, I enjoyed riding my bicycle or walking to my grandmother's house. While I do not reside on this road now, my three children are often at my parents' house each day after school and throughout the summers located on Allen's Lake Road. They enjoy the same pleasures of childhood in that neighborhood as I did. Putting tractor and trailers with logs on them would immediately change the dynamic of this neighborhood. It is a dangerous reckless move to county approves commercial activity in this purely residential area." That's Evelyn G. Bryant.
And you had one more, Mr. Carter?
All right, we got the same one as a duplicate, we'll get that second one to you in a few minutes.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry, Supervisor Allen has it. All right, this one is from Denise Bryant. It says, "Dear sirs, I am writing to express my opposition to the proposed commercial sawmill on Allen's Lake Road. I live at 361 Thomas Road. It's most likely large tractor-trailer is coming and going from the site in question will pass by my residence. I do not believe Thomas Road slash Allen's Lake Road's residential area infrastructure is suited for consistent 80,000-pound tractor-trailers. About a year ago, concrete trucks delivered multiple loads to the site, which caused a large sinkhole in the Allen's Lake Road. At the last, at the last I checked, there's still a large VDOT barrel sitting in the road or the road marking in that area. There's an old bridge at the bottom of the hill on Allen's Lake Road. A sinkhole is starting to form on the side of the road. Consistent in and out of large trucks is likely to cause damage to that culvert pipe bridge, which would cause the entire Allen's Lake Road community to be inaccessible since there, that is a dead-end road. Based on the transcripts from the planning commission public hearing, it's unclear to me that the requested number of deliveries... requested number of deliveries, if the requested permit is for a commercial sawmill, one would think that raw timber would come in, be processed, and then go out. That would increase the amount of truck traffic in the neighborhood. I'm all for expanding business opportunities in our county. However, I do think this proposed location is inappropriate for large trucks. Respectfully, Dennis Bryant, Denise Bryant, I'm sorry."
Thank you, Mr. Carter, for reading those. Does any supervisor have any question for the applicant before we have our own discussion?
Mr. Yoder, you said that, uh, you, you're going to put in another driveway?
I would like to, yes.
Well, you're going to have to, it looks like, um, because...
Regardless...
Yeah, Mr. Allen's not going to give you the, the easement or allow you to use the driveway for commercial use, based on the email that I read in.
Regardless if I, if you approve this or not, if...
Are you asking a question, Mr. Yoder, I'm sorry?
Yeah, I am.
Okay, what's your question?
Well, he said I have to either way put in a new driveway. Is that...
Well, I mean, that's my understanding from you because you can't use the current driveway for commercial use, correct?
That's right.
You understand that?
I do.
Okay, so you said previously that you're going to put in another driveway?
That's, that's correct.
Okay.
Do you have a question, Supervisor Brian?
No.
Okay.
I just want to clarify one thing that Ronald Dunkum had said, that I did not ask for any tractors and trailers. I, I, there would be tractors and trailers.
There would be tractors and trailers, is that what you're saying, Mr. Yoder? Okay.
And you had, you had said four, that you'd be happy with four?
Four can work if we, if we don't count the pickups and the tandems. I'd like it to be a little bit higher, but...
Any other discussion, gentlemen? Yes, I...
I got a question.
The, the, uh, public hearing is closed and Supervisor Matthews, yes, you're recognized.
Yes, was there ever any speed study or any type of, uh, VDOT information in regards to this site?
Could you address that, Ms. Edmiston, please? Thank you, ma'am.
Supervisor Matthews, as all, uh, special use permit applications, there is a document required for signature by VDOT, um, which will state whether or not there is a need for a traffic impact analysis. This was completed for Mr. Yoder based upon the driveway that he currently utilizes, which apparently, um, is part of the ingress and egress over the Kendall and Kathy Allen property to Mr. Yoder's. So, the necessary document was obtained and reviewed by VDOT for his initial application process.
Thank you, Ms. Edmiston. Yes, sir, Supervisor Matthews. Yes, sir.
What was that? He just made the statement that he wants to put in another driveway. Well, him to do that, he's got to go through that same scenario again with VDOT, am I correct or not?
M- Mr. Matthews, Supervisor Matthews, um, in the conditions that may be placed upon this case, the very first one states that all federal, state, and local regulations, ordinances, and laws be strictly adhered to. He complied during the initial phases of his application because the driveway he was utilizing is the one that he uses for personal use. At this point, in an effort to find resolution with the members of the board of supervisors, if you're stating that he needs to have another driveway entrance, that would be part of the conditions and that he would need to, um, comply with the state regulations per VDOT for that entrance.
For commercial use?
The, um, the reason for that driveway, um, usage would need to be conveyed to VDOT, which I can, as staff, assist Mr. Yoder, uh, with documents of, um, this application case and it would be up to him. He contacts VDOT, not staff here at administration, but Mr. Yoder would contact them and let them know. Now, upon receipt of that document, if we get to the point where, of course, the new driveway, um, must be a condition, then when that's received by my office, I'll review it and ensure that it, it shows that, um, it would be used for this commercial purpose.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions or discussion, gentlemen?
No, sir.
Okay, what is your pleasure, Supervisor Allen?
My pleasure is to deny it and maybe help him try to find a place somewhere else, but to deny it for Allen's Lake Road. My motion.
So, so, so your motion is to deny the application request for the special use permit? Okay, is there a second to that motion?
I second it.
Motion by Supervisor Allen, seconded by Supervisor Davis, to deny this permit in terms of the special use permit, case 21 dash S U P 291. Does anyone have any questions on the motion before we vote?
The denial is based on what?
Supervisor Allen.
Doesn't have a permit for his driveway. He doesn't, he doesn't have a permit for his building and the road.
We can set conditions to get those fixed now.
I'm not finished. And the road is not good enough, in my opinion, for him to be on. Plus, it doesn't match a comp plan. The comp plan should have him in a different location.
Supervisor Bryant?
Thank you.
Go ahead. Any other questions before we vote? Again, the, the motion is to deny the permit. Okay, so those.
I'm confused.
Supervisor Chambers.
I'm confused what's going on here because you, I'm confused on the number of trucks and I'm feeling, you know, all of this stuff on it.
The original permit, uh, hold on. The original permit said one to three trucks, three trucks a day, which would be, if you had a driveway on there, it'd be 30 trucks would pass your driveway every week. Plus, you'd have the vehicles hauling their sawed up wood back home. And that'd be another, you know, if they had three, three loads to come out, that would be another six trucks coming by your driveway. So you have 36 trucks going by your driveway and not counting anything else to all sawdust or whatever else he may need up in there. I'm just.
Does that answer your question?
That's where it all started off. Now we moved, at the planning commission, they moved it back from, uh, three trucks a day to four trucks a week, but still I'm in, not in agreement with it at that area. And they had a certain time of day for it to come in and out after the school buses.
Supervisor Chambers, is that?
I'm still kind of flat on it, but I see what you're saying, but.
Supervisor Bryant, did you? Okay. Have anything to say? Are you all prepared to vote?
Driveway?
Yes.
Say it, say it again, Vice Chairman Chambers.
Answer my question.
Yes, based on what Ms. Edmondson just said, if, if we require that he put a commercial driveway in and amend his building that, that Mr. Allen's talking about, I would even go so far as to get VDOT to check that road to make sure that that road can accommodate tractor trailer traffic. But I've heard, you know, I've, I've heard people say that kids play on the road. Well, um, kids shouldn't be playing on the road, but we could set a time, I heard Mr. Allen say, set a time for tractor trailers to be delivered. So as not to coincide with bus traffic. I, I'm sure that Mr. Yoder would be, uh, agreeable with that as well.
It's already in here.
As a condition, Mr. Bryant.
I want to show you, come here. From the road to the ditch, does he not own that property? So where would the commercial driveway go in that you're talking about?
Over here.
That's where he said he had to put in a new separate tank, a drain field.
Property come here.
His property?
Jordan and I looked at that Sunday night.
Would we like to have more discussion or are we ready to vote? And again, the motion is to deny, just so you're correct in your voting. You call for the vote? Okay. Again, the question is, shall we deny the case 21 dash S U P 291 for the commercial, for a special use permit for the commercial sawmill? So if you vote yes to this motion, you vote to deny. If you vote no, you vote to approve, if that makes sense.
No.
No, that's not.
No.
You can't do that.
No. It, it doesn't approve it. All it does is.
Right, right, right.
It's his motion.
That's right, that's right. That's what I, if you'd have clarified, so. So we're going to call for the vote. Raise your hand if you're in support of the motion. Supervisor Matthews, how do you vote?
Vote yes.
Uh, yeah, you're hanging up.
Supervisor Bryant, how did you vote, sir? He did. Those opposed to the motion?
I stand.
So the motion is agreed to, to deny, five in favor, one against, and one abstention. Is that right, uh, Vice Chairman Chambers?
I stand.
Okay, so the motion, uh, the application is denied.
What?
Moving on to our next public hearing is case number 21 dash Z M A 293, Landowner Rock Holding East LLC. The applicant is Rockwood Products of Dilwyn, requests for rezoning from A1 to light, uh, to industrial light, industrial M1 for the purposes of zoning consistency to match the existing and future uses of the parcels and to correct the zoning district. If, Ms. Edmondson, if you could address this, please, before we open the public hearing.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Our next case is 21 Z M A 293, Landowners Rock Holding East LLC, and the applicant is Rockwood Products of Dilwyn. Uh, the zoning map amendment is the request this evening, um, and the reason for the public hearing, they wish to rezone from agricultural A1 to industrial light M1 for the purpose of zoning consistency to match the existing and future uses for the parcels to the correct zoning district. This property is located at 19135 North James Madison Highway, Dilwyn, Virginia. The property is currently zoned A1. The landowner, as I stated, is Rock Holdings East, applicant, Rockwood Products of Dilwyn. Rockwood Products of Dilwyn seeks to expand its operations, which requires compliance to the Buckingham County zoning ordinance. Rockwood Products of Dilwyn acquired the property in 2014 as the subject of a major economic development announcement in October 2016. Due to the significant growth and expansion, Rockwood Products of Dilwyn is requesting the zoning map amendment for current and future compliance. Mike Seamster is here on behalf of that application to address questions or concerns you may have this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Edmondson. Mr. Seamster, if you wanted to address your, um, application, sir?
Everybody doing today?
Doing well, thank you. Did you want to summarize your project, sir?
Um, still going the same as it been going, uh, I mean, nothing's changed.
Okay. Does, does any member, yes, Supervisor Bryant?
As you said at the last meeting, uh, you're going to dress up the entryway?
Yeah, I have a civil engineer, he's doing all my work.
Okay.
Yeah.
To possibly improve some site distance as well?
Yeah, we have, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
And a, any other questions?
Oh, that was my only.
For the gentleman, okay. So we'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Mr. Schumacher, do we have anyone to sign up to speak?
Mr. Chairman, we did not have anybody sign up to speak.
Okay, then the public hearing is closed.
I'm going to motion to go and approve it.
Second.
Motion by Vice Chairman Chambers, seconded by Supervisor Bryant to approve the case and the rezoning and the application. So if we didn't have any questions before we vote, all in favor, raise your hand of the application. Those opposed, Supervisor Matthews?
Yes.
The motion carries seven to zero to approve the application. Thank you, sir, for being here. Ms. Edmondson, you're up again. So we have several zoning matters under item O. The first two are continuations regarding, uh, small solar, uh, facilities. We did have public hearings on those. So the first one is the continuation of case 21 dash S U P 285. Ms., Ms. Edmondson.
This case, 21 S U P 285, landowner Larry and Deborah Davis, the applicant Evan Carlson, Impact Power Solutions. This evening Evan Carlson and Scott Aronson, representative from IP Solar, are both available to address questions and concerns. Um, of course, the tax map involved is 114 parcel two. It contains approximately 36.42 acres and it's located on Gravel Hill Road. It's currently zoned A1. Their request has been to obtain a special use permit for a solar generating facility up to two megawatts. This case has been introduced. Public hearing has been held last month in December, and there was ongoing discussion and negotiation or, um, information that needed to be provided between the board and the applicant. So they're available to, um, discuss this with you.
Didn't we continue 285 and 286 based on the solar policy?
Yes.
That was part of the conversation, yes, sir.
I move that we continue 285 and 286 since we have had, uh, postpone our solar policy due to extenuating circumstances.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Supervisor Bryant, seconded by Supervisor Allen to continue case 21 S U P 285 and, uh, 286 based on the, um, postponement and continuation of the solar policy. That's O1 and 2 in your packet. Does anyone have any questions before we vote? All in favor of continuing those, please raise your hand. Those opposed, Supervisor Matthews?
Yes.
Okay, the votes seven, zero unanimous to continue O1 and 2. Moving now to O3, introduction of case 21 dash S U P 287. Ms. Edmondson.
Yes, case 21 S U P 287, um, the, our landowner Susan Hudgens, Carl Burmaster, James Burmaster, at 5481 Mount Rush Highway, Dilwyn, Virginia. Our applicant is, uh, James Burmaster. Property information is tax map 158, parcel 11. It does contain approximately 103.7 acres and it's in the James River Magisterial District. Zoning district is A1. The applicant wishes to obtain a special use permit for the purpose of operating an Airbnb bed and breakfast with events. The applicant is asking the Board of Supervisors to set a public hearing date for this request. This property is located on Mount Rush Highway. The landowners are Susan Hudgens, Carl Burmaster, and James Burmaster. Our applicant is James Burmaster. The property is zoned A1. The zoning ordinance does not permit an Airbnb and bed and breakfast with events as permitted by right in an agricultural A1 zoning district. The zoning ordinance requires that an Airbnb bed and breakfast and/or event facility obtain a special use permit. Mr. Burmaster states in the narrative that the main purpose for this application is to have events at the farm of all different types, uh, music, car shows, live concerts, et cetera. He'd like to entertain 3,500 guests for these events. Mr. Burmaster presented his initial application in August, but after discussion with the planning commission, he resubmitted with changes. And of course, this is the result of that new application. The planning commission held a public hearing regarding this case on December 27th, 2021. Three individuals spoke during the public hearing, voiced in concern of pollution to the watershed on which the property is located, types of entertainment to be allowed, noise past 9:00 p.m., traffic, fire, and EMS concerns. After discussion with the applicant, the planning commission voted to present this case with a recommendation of approval to the Board of Supervisors. Now, I will state that the conditions have increased since, uh, the public hearing was held at the planning commission in an effort to encompass the concerns of neighboring and adjacent property owners. Mr. Burmaster is aware of these changes. They address fire, safety, sanitation, uh, noise levels. He did agree to no noise past 9:00 p.m. And he would be turning in an event plan 21 days prior to the Board of Supervisors, um, and to the staff for review to ensure that all conditions are met. With that being said, would it be the pleasure of the Board of Supervisors to hold a public hearing for this case? And if so, February 14th, 2022 at 6:00 p.m.
Go move.
Second.
Motion by Vice Chairman Chambers, seconded by Supervisor Allen, to set a February 14th, 6 o'clock p.m., 2022, public hearing for this case. Does anyone have any questions before we vote? All in favor, raise your hand, please. Those opposed, Supervisor Matthews?
Yes.
Okay, the motion carries unanimously to set the public hearing. Um, O4 is introduction of case 21 dash S U P 295. Ms. Edmondson.
Yes, this case 21 S U P 295, landowners and applicants are Jennifer Sombar, Katie Van Skiver at 143 Hatton Ferry Road, Scottsville. Tax map nine, parcel 10A, contains approximately 25.159 acres, and it is the Slate River Magisterial District, currently zoned A1. The applicant wishes to obtain a special use permit for the purpose of operating an Airbnb bed and breakfast campsites and event center. These applicants, uh, or the applicants, are asking the Board of Supervisors to hold a public hearing for this case. The zoning ordinance, of course, does not permit an Airbnb bed and breakfast campsites and event center. Events to include beekeeping, honey harvesting, survival skills, wreath making, cookie baking, spa weekends, classes, therapy for Army veterans, and interactive programs for children and elderly, as permitted by right, uses in agricultural A1 zoning district. Ms. Sombar contacted the zoning app, office as a result of a conversation questioning the activities held. Ms. Sombar obtained an application to come into compliance with the zoning ordinance. Ms. Sombar was instructed not to hold events at this time pending the outcome of the special use permit application. She is also working with the building inspector in an effort to bring structures into compliance with zoning and building code. And it will also be necessary to work with the health department regarding necessary permitting for septic field approval of the structures. The planning commission held a public hearing for this case on December 27th, 2021, and passes this case to the Board of Supervisors with a recommendation of approval. Would it be the pleasure of the Board of Supervisors to hold a public hearing for this case? If so, February 14th, 2022 at 6:00 p.m.
Go move.
Motion by Supervisor Allen, seconded by Supervisor Bryant, to hold a February 14th, 2022, 6 o'clock p.m., public hearing for this case. Does anyone have any questions before we vote? All in favor, please raise your hand. Those opposed, Supervisor Matthews?
Yes.
The motion carries unanimously, seven to zero. The next case is case 21 dash S U P 296. Ms. Edmondson.
Yes, uh, the next case, 21 S U P 296, landowner and applicant is Buckingham Cattlemen's Association, mailing address of P O Box 95 here in Buckingham. The tax map is 122, parcel four, lot 3A, and it contains approximately 5.03 acres, and it's located physically at 11851 West James Anderson Highway, Buckingham, Mayzville Magisterial District. Zoning district is, of course, A1. The request tonight before you is the applicant wishes to continue the agricultural use as has been consistent with current uses as approved in permit 13 S U P 217, and to promote increased agricultural use and agritourism use. The applicant is asking for a modification and amendment to their original approval to include strike conditions number nine and 22, and amend condition number 21 to state this facility shall be used for indoor meetings, conferences, receptions, sales, trainings, and outdoor agritourism events such as, but not limited to, agriculture sales, shipping, bull riding, barrel racing, roping, horse training, cattle handling, and festivals. The applicant is asking the Board of Supervisors to hold a public hearing for this case. The original request was submitted and approved by the Buckingham County Board of Supervisors in April 2013. That original S U P approval is included in your case. I have amended those conditions before you tonight to include what was presented in their application. The planning commission held a public hearing for this case on December 27th, 2021, and sends this to the Board of Supervisors with a recommendation of approval. Would it be the pleasure of the Board of Supervisors to hold a public hearing? If so, February 14th, 2022 at 6:00 p.m.
Go move. Second.
Supervisor Allen moved, seconded by Supervisor Davis, to hold a public hearing on this case for February 14th, 2022 at 6 o'clock p.m. Does anyone have any questions before we vote?
14th of January.
Oh. 6 o'clock, yeah.
Time's day, man, ho, ho.
I got one more for you.
All in favor, raise your hand, please. And I. Those opposed, Supervisor Matthews?
Yes.
Yes.
The motion carries seven to zero for our fifth Valentine's, for our third Valentine's Day public hearing. The next, then last, for Ms. Edmiston, is item zero six, introduction of case twenty-one dash S U P two ninety-seven for George and Susan Pamela Goodwin. Ms. Edmiston.
Yes, twenty-one S U P two ninety-seven. Our landowners and applicants are George and Pam Goodwin at two sixty-three Bellmead Lane, Scottsville, Virginia. Their tax map four, parcel nine. It contains approximately one hundred and two point three six eight acres, and it's located at two ninety-one Bellmead Lane in the Slate River Magisterial District. It is zoned A one. The request before you tonight is a, the applicant wishing to obtain a special use permit for the purpose of operating an Airbnb bed and breakfast with campsites. The applicants are asking the Board of Supervisors to hold a public hearing for this request. The zoning ordinance, of course, does not permit an Airbnb bed and breakfast with campsites as permitted by right, use in an agricultural A one zoning district. The zoning ordinance requires that an Airbnb bed and breakfast with campground campsite obtain a special use permit request. This case has been introduced to the planning commission. The planning commission held a public hearing for the case on December twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-one, and sends this to the Board of Supervisors with a recommendation of approval.
Vice Chairman Chambers.
I've been knowing the, must admit, Goodwin for a number of years. There's some real good people, and I'm confident she'll do the right thing. And I make a motion to approve this.
Second.
On a motion by Vice Chairman Chambers, second by Supervisor Bryant, to set a February fourteenth, twenty-twenty-two, six o'clock P M. public hearing for this case. Does anyone have any questions? All in favor, raise your hand, please. Those opposed? Supervisor Matthews?
Play me.
Did he say yes? Okay. The motion carries seven to zero. Thank you, Ms. Edmiston.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Moving on to item, Department Agency Reports and Items of Consideration. We do have committee appointments, this being the first of the year. So P one, consider appointment of two board members to the wastewater and water utilities committee and county staff, as outlined by the bylaws and the rules of procedures.
Who's serving on it now? The two willing to still serve?
It's Jordan and I because that's what's in our district.
Go move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is to, the motion by Vice Chairman Chambers, second by Supervisor Allen, to keep the committee as is with Supervisor Miles and Brian serving. See, would have any questions before we vote? All in favor, raise your hand, please. Those opposed, Supervisor Matthews?
Yes.
The motion carries unanimously. The next item is consider appointment for two board members of the solid waste committee, and county staff, as outlined in the bylaws and rules of procedures. So again, this is solid waste committee, gentlemen.
The two that are serving on it, they're willing to still serve, right?
Yes.
Chairman and Bryant.
Go move.
Right, okay.
Second.
Mr. Bryant, do you see, want to be on?
The motion by Vice Chairman Chambers, second by Supervisor Bryant, to keep this committee as is with Supervisors Chambers and Bri-
Not me.
Not you? I thought it was you and Bryant.
Donnie.
Donnie and Bryant.
Donnie and brother.
Okay, sorry, sorry. Yeah.
Donnie and her.
Yeah.
With Bryant and Bryant. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. Does anyone have any questions before we vote? All in favor, raise your hand. Those opposed, Supervisor Matthews?
Yes.
Okay. Item three is consider appointment of two board members to the finance committee and county staff, as outlined in the bylaws and rules of procedures. Currently, Mr. Matthews and myself are there. If anyone else would like to serve, that's fine.
Oh, sir.
Make a motion to same two serve.
Yeah, he skipped that one.
Said on finance, I thought you was recycle.
I'm on finance right now.
He jumped.
Okay, jump on, okay.
I move that we leave finance with Chairman Miles and former Chairman Matthews on the committee.
Second.
Okay, the motion is by Supervisor Bryant, second by Vice Chairman Chambers, to leave the committee as is, finance committee, in terms of Miles and Matthews serving on that committee. Does anyone have any questions on that before we vote? All in favor, please raise your hand. Those opposed, Supervisor Matthews?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously. Apologize, so recycling committee? Consider appointment of two board members to the recycling committee and county staff, as outlined in the bylaws and rules of procedures. Who serves on that committee right now?
Matthews and Bryant.
Okay.
Go move. Second.
Motion by Supervisor Bryant, second by Vice Chairman Chambers, to leave the recycling committee as is with Supervisor Bryant and Supervisor Matthews representing the board on that committee. Does anyone have any questions before we vote? All in favor, raise your hand, please. Those opposed, Supervisor Matthews?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Alabama wanted coin toss.
Motion carries unanimously. The next appointment is consider appointment of two board members to the personnel committee and county staff, as outlined in the bylaws and rules of procedures. Right now, Vice Chairman Chambers and Supervisor Bryant serve on that committee.
Second.
Motion by Supervisor Bryant, second by Supervisor Allen, to keep those two supervisors, that Supervisors Chambers and Bryant, on the personnel committees. Does anyone have any questions? All in favor, please raise your hand. Those opposed, Supervisor Matthews?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously. The next item is, on the agenda is Finance Director Kevin Hickman. He's going to propose a twenty-twenty-two budget calendar. Yes, sir, Supervisor Bryant.
We have the library community center construction. Is that, is that committee still needed?
Yeah, library.
It's not on here.
The animal control construction.
And those are ad hoc committees, is that right, Mr. Carter?
That's why they're not on bylaws.
Oh, okay, okay.
How about, how about the emergency services committee?
We got that on here.
It's not enough bylaws, but if you wanted to do that this year, you can.
We'd have to change the bylaws.
We need, to me, we need to add it because of the paid emergency.
Yeah, with the emergency services.
So your motion would be, we need to amend the bylaws first.
Yes, sir. My motion is to amend the bylaws to add an emergency services committee.
The second. The motion by Supervisor Bryant, seconded by Vice Chairman Chambers, is to amend the bylaws to add the emergency services, the existing emergency services committee, laying that out as a committee, as a standing committee. Does anyone have any questions on that before we vote? All in favor, raise your hand, please. Those opposed, Supervisor Matthews?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously. So now that being the case, we need to go ahead and reappoint to that committee.
I think right now it's me and Don Matthews.
Supervisor Allen and myself.
Okay, do you, do we want to take action on that? Since we've codified it in the bylaws?
You both willing to stay on it? Danny?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Supervisor Bryant, seconded by Supervisor Davis, to keep the EMS committee as is with Supervisors Allen and Matthews serving. Does anyone have any questions before we vote on the EMS committee? All in favor, raise your hand, please. Those opposed, Supervisor Matthews?
Yes.
Thank you, it carries unanimously. Now, Mr. Hickman, Finance Director, consider twenty-twenty-two budget calendar.
Good evening, board. So attached in your packet, you'll see the budget calendar for this year. Starting with January twenty-eighth, the request forms will be distributed. And then on February eleventh, the request will be due to the county administrators, or the county administrator, excuse me. March fourteenth, the departments and agencies will make the budget request presentations to the board. Then March twenty-first, county administrator issues the recommendation, recommend, recommended budget to the Board of Supervisors. And then March twenty-third will be a work session and possible adoption of proposed budget. March twenty-fourth would be a work session as well, if needed. And then March thirtieth would advertise the Board of Supervisors' proposed budget, as well as April sixth. And then you will notice a change there. On April eighteenth will be the public hearing. That is a change to the previous proposed board meetings. So instead of the second Monday of April, it will now be the third Monday of April, when the board will meet for the public hearing. And then lastly, April twenty-fifth will be considering the final adoption of the budget and tax rates. Are there any questions on the budget calendar?
Any questions, gentlemen?
I'll just point out one thing before you guys vote. That March twenty-third joint meeting with the school board, in the past, you guys done it at five o'clock, you done it at six o'clock. I put it in at six o'clock. Do you want to do it earlier, or you want to leave it at six?
End of my busy season, if you make it earlier than six.
Yeah, that's tough for you to get there.
Okay, leave it, leave it, okay.
It was tough last year, wasn't it? Yeah, six is good.
We have a motion to adopt.
Go move. To adopt the budget calendar.
Motion by Supervisor Allen, second by Supervisor Bryant, to adopt the budget calendar for fiscal year twenty-twenty-two. Does anyone have any questions before we vote? All in favor, please raise your hand, as I. Those opposed, Supervisor Matthews?
Yes.
Thank you, board.
The motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Hickman. Next is consider an appropriation of donation from Conite Mining employees to our animal control department. Mr. Carter?
Yes, this is one of those good stories we get, and we've been blessed to have it happen a lot lately, that the city employees at Conite Mining have donated a sizable amount of money, over a thousand dollars, to the animal control as a donation. And I remind you, as they done in the past, these are donations from the employees. This is not a corporate donation. So these are all hard-earned money from the employees they raised to donate to this call. So I'm asking you tonight to appropriate those funds for use by animal control facility.
Don't move, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Motion by Supervisor Bryant, seconded by Vice Chairman Chambers, to consider the appropriation from Conite Mining employees to the animal control department. Does anyone have any questions before we vote? All in favor, please raise your hand, aye. Those opposed, no. Supervisor Matthews?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, and I'll send them a letter as well, thanking for their donation.
Thank you, Mr. Carter. We handle the D C R Scenic Rivers designation. And last, we have EMS Chief Cody Davis with some updates with regards to the winter storm and other updates.
Good evening, gentlemen. Mr. Carter, and I thought it would be a good idea to brief you guys on the efforts of the department and another various public safety departments from the storm. I did try to punt it off on the Emergency Management Coordinator, Ryan, and she had some childcare issues, so it got back on my plate. So sorry, you've got something a little less pleasant to look at this evening. But first, I'd like to start with, prior to the snowstorm, our department has been plagued heavily by this COVID Omicron variant. A lot of staffing issues that we've been able to power through amongst our vaccinated employees and everything. You know, it's not due to any sort of complacency on our part, just a very hard-hitting issue for us. I think the last first, the last two weeks have been difficult. We're kind of seeing the light at the end of the tunnel this week. Things are kind of getting back to normal. So we went into the storm kind of already battered and bruised a little bit, but made it out. Ryan worked diligently with Jamie and Sam Davis to pull these numbers together. So I'll just kind of mouth-vomit for a second and answer any questions you guys have after the fact. So all of the fire departments, EMS agency, and police departments had numerous, numerous calls. To sum that up, the dispatch office received a total of five hundred and eighty-five admin-related calls between the dates of January third and sixth. Two hundred and sixty-one nine-one-one total calls received. And then of those two sixty-one, two hundred and twenty-four became incidents that we had to respond to in some fashion. So to break those down, we had forty-three storm-related damage calls, twelve equipment and power line-related calls, eleven welfare checks, nineteen motor vehicle accidents for disabled vehicles, thirty-three EMS-only calls, and then twenty-seven weather informative calls. Aside from that, Sheriff Kidd's Department conducted about seventy-nine calls within that timeframe. Beyond just answering those nine-one-one calls, however, all of the departments, especially, I really want to give a, some notice to our volunteer fire departments. Those guys just stepped up big time. You know, I had a crew, an extra crew come in, kind of a voluntary recall, but those four fire departments, man, all day and all night for those dates. You know, and those guys aren't getting paid at all, you know. I just, I really want to just say that in full disclosure, from just answering those calls to doing unsolicited welfare checks on some people, parts of the population, that they knew, you know, would benefit from that, to literally escorting my department's people into calls and out of calls, when trees are falling right in front of us and right behind us, going to a resident and from. Those guys were with us in lockstep, you know, getting our EMS crews to those homes and stuff. I was out there, I had to staff a rig that day myself, and I can attest to it. The Glenmore Fire Department got me to a call and out from a call, you know. So beyond that, they were able to call on some, some, some kind of personal friend resources and get some heavy equipment out there in the field to help expedite process because VDOT was inundated, you know, everybody was taken by surprise. And then, in the evenings and days following that initial hit, both the Toga and Arbonia Fire Departments opened their doors to being relief centers. So, you know, a kind of scaled-down version of a shelter, but they were able to offer relief to these people, to come in and get warm, get fresh water, a warm bite to eat. You know, we were able to provide them with some M R E's, meals ready to eat that we keep in stock here to give out to their folks, places to charge their phones and things like that, just a little relief. The other two departments, Dillwyn and Glenmore, I spoke with them, both wanted to. Dillwyn had some mechanical issues with their generator, and Glenmore's amidst some renovations that were just kind of, just, it wasn't a good time for them. But they both, you know, did all that they could. So beyond that, I would personally attest, and I don't want to draw too much attention to any single persons or something, because there were so many acts of goodwill. But we had, we struggled with both of our generators at both our stations, getting them running when the power went out. We got them running. The Glenmore station struggle was a little bit of a surprise to this brand spanking new, right? Turns out the electricians forgot to do some programming or whatever. Anyways, in the heat of the moment, lots of snow on the ground, we needed to basically get around the backside of that new station to jump-start the generator. And the street tires on my issued vehicle, we're not going to be conducive for that. You know, it's a new yard. So actually, the Ragland family, Kim and Chris Ragland and C J Ragland and them, were able to come out like a twenty-foot-long set of extension cords,[1644.57] and then their vehicle that's better suited to do that job, and helped us get our generator running that night, in the middle of the night, you know, freezing cold, you know. And they haven't looked for any sort of pat on the back from it. But while I had the mic, I wanted to do that. And like I said, I cautiously do that, because there were so many acts of goodwill. But yeah, your, your people, whether it be volunteer or paid, work very hard during that event. You know, it's what we're here to do. We're not looking for accolades, but we just want you to know.
Outstanding, thank you.
Carter, do we know if anyone in the county is still without power?
Um, I did not look at the reports today, I'll be honest with you. But I do believe there still are some outages, you know. Numbers right now, right offhand, but there, there were, every day it's improving. It was, it was not anything extremely noteworthy as of yesterday. I would venture to say there's either none or very, very few.
Mr. Carter, do you know, sir?
I can't speak on Dominion, I've been getting updates from them, and they have all their customers back with power. The co-op, I haven't gotten a report from them, so I don't know about them. But Dominion customers are all fully back in power.
Yes, ma'am.
The, like the addition of the Glenmore station? In terms of the county taking over, EM, I would venture to say it gave us a lot of versatility and, and control during something like this. Yeah, I, I think it was a critical. Honestly, the, the extra station, you know, the response times are already increased exponentially. The fact that we're able to divide up the first dues, cut down on that perfectly. Us having our own staff that I could ask, you know, hey, calls are crazy right now. They're taking a long time to turn around. Any of you guys available to come in for some voluntary overtime? Yeah, okay, cool. So we had an extra staff get, you know, a truck get staffed. Just really gave us a lot of versatility to work with.
Chairman, can I say something?
Sure, yes, sir, Supervisor Davis.
Uh, I just want to make sure, and Cody iterated that, but I didn't see what the other fire departments did, but I seen what Arbonia did, because I was there, but. And we have some businessmen in our community that brought their equipment over there and helped drag trees out of the road. And I was just wondering, call since the governor declared a state of emergency, could we reimburse them for fuel or something, or give them a donation deal or something where they could? They didn't have to bring Brad Bickford body skitter over there, and Ted Flipping body skits there over there, and they were getting stuff out the road. And Cody said on 610, Carlesville Road, the ambulance had to come down it, and they had to cut them in and cut them out. I just wondered if we could do something for those businesses, for us. If it ain't nothing but something, they can take something off your taxes. I ain't saying we got to monetary, give them anything. Like me, the county could do something for, or maybe we can do something through the fire department as a donation through.
Is it reimbursable under declaring the state of emergency?
We would need to do a local declaration, and then we, as a county, have to meet our threshold. And a huge contributor to that typically for, for counties like Buckingham would be VDOT. They get factored in, they're expenditures, which, you know, they're still expending. So, you know, if that were even a door you wanted to open, y'all would have to think, consider about, considering a local declaration. And then we'd have to see how those numbers come in, once VDOT submits, and, and we gather and submit. We might make the threshold, we might not. But that's the only way to, for it to be reimbursed from like the states or feds through a declaration.
Mr. Carter, is that something that we would need to do, or do you have any input on this?
Well, based on what Cody said, yes, if you want to follow those that pay, if you have to declare and.
I mean, they didn't ask for nothing, but I just think it would be nice if we done something for them. He didn't have to burn his fuel to run around all day.
Regarding Dennis' question, I was thinking too about going through the volunteer departments. I don't think in the past we've made donations for private businesses. But if we can go through the volunteers.
We can say that they write him something that he donated to the fire department, his piece of equipment for the day, and figure out some kind of monetary amount that it was a donation. Write something off his taxes, huh?
Yeah, yeah.
I'll give it Mr. Wright, we can look into how, ways of doing that.
Does it, does that work, Supervisor Davis? Okay. You're good?
Oh, I got it.
Mr. Davis, okay. Do you want to have any questions for Mr. Davis?
I just want to thank him for all the hard work you do, you know, you, I looked at the scan, I know you've been busy, man, that thing just keep going on.
Job is very secure.
Yes.
The job is very secure.
Generators were eager to see you sitting.
Y'all have it.
Be a lot of generators.
So you put a motion in there?
Thank you, Mr. Davis, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, go back to New York.
Next item on the agenda is Q, County Attorney Matters, Mr. Wright.
Good evening, sort of fails what I have to talk about after all the good work's been done by the various emergency services and the businesses and the people, but there are two matters that I'd like for you to consider, and if you think it's appropriate to take action on. Both relate to zoning and the way the zoning ordinance gets amended. It never is a problem until it is a problem, and we've had in the ordinance for a long time that the applicant had to post signs when the zoning special use permit. You know, we talk about Dillon, Dillon being a Dillon state, and we can only do what the state authorizes us to do. State doesn't authorize that requirement in the zoning ordinance, but the county has always thought it was important to get as much awareness as you can. So we're not asking you to do away with that, but what we're asking you to do is ask the planning commission to study the notion of, if it doesn't happen technically correct, that it's not a foul. In other words, you would, you would add language that's attached there that says a technical violation of that signposting ordinance, which is not really required anyway, would not cause any action taken by the board of supervisors or the planning commission to be invalid. And the process is to amend the zoning ordinance, you have to ask the planning commission to study it. The planning commission has to study it and make a report to the board of supervisors, and then the board of supervisors has to advertise and adopt it. The first step is for the planning commission to look at it and make a recommendation. I've offered you some language, if you think it's worthy that you'd ask the planning commission, consider amending the zoning ordinance in accordance with the language such as included on the attachment, and make the report to the board as expeditiously as practical. And you have there some language attached to the number I sent you. Ask what the pleasure of the board is in regard.
Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Wright? So we do have two motions in order right now?
Well, we haven't talked about the second one.
Okay, the first one, yes, sir.
First one, I move that we send it to the planning commission to revise the zoning ordinance for special use permit for signage.
The motion by Supervisor Brian, seconded by Vice Chairman Chambers. Does anyone have any question on the motion before we vote? All in favor, raise your hand, please. Those opposed, Supervisor Matthews?
Yes.
The motion carries unanimously.
Since you're tasking the planning commission with some other items, I think you've seen in some of the applications you've had for zoning changes that it would be convenient to have a site plan. We're not asking, we're not suggesting you need to have a detail in surveyed, engineered type of site plan for some of these, but it would be helpful to have a site plan that is leased to scale, so you can see what's going in and coming out or being expanded. And in some of the cases you've had recently, you said if the building expanded. Well, we don't really know what the building expanded is, and we don't know what it is. So at the same time, that's your task, the planning commission was looking at the sign part of it. You, we'd ask them to consider whether a site plan requirement where a special use permit is requested, a scaled site plan would be helpful. They may come back in favor or against or otherwise, but I, I think it's worth looking at it again, particularly in light of some of the various applications that we've had recently. And so I'd ask, again, I've offered you some language, if you think it's appropriate, to consider referring it to the planning commission for their consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Wright. Any questions, board members?
We'll send it to the command.
Yeah.
You made a motion. I'll second it.
Motion by Supervisor, by Vice Chairman Chambers, seconded by Vice, seconded by Supervisor Brian, that the planning commission consider amending the zoning ordinance to incorporate that applicants applying for the special use permits present a scaled site plan with the application and to make report to this board as convenient to the planning commission. Does anyone have any questions before we vote? All in favor, raise your hand, please. Hold on one second, you have a question?
Would that make your life easier? I'm ready, Joel.
Okay. Please raise your hand, aye. Those opposed, no. Supervisor Matthews?
Yes. Freeing up in Alabama.
The motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Wright.
I should have given, this was genesis, the genesis of this request comes from staff. I should definitely give that credit, so thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Next is item R, County Administrator Report, Mr. Carter.
Couple things tonight. First of all is our fiscal 2021 audit. Usually we have that to be in January, sometimes February. This year will be February. They're running a little behind with the audit this year, and they have some staffing issues. And of course, with COVID, people working from home, they're a little delayed. So I'm hoping they'll be on your agenda next month on February to go over the audit with you. The second thing is the Virginia Local Government Day on February 2nd. If you guys want to join, I'll be going to that. If you guys want to join me, please let me know at VirginiaForLove, so we can get you registered. I think some of you have gone before and spent that day down there, so you can get a chance to meet your local representatives and just tell them what's on your mind and what you want seen done in Buckingham County. Thank Supervisor Brian, you've been there several times, so if you want to go, just let me know, and I will get you registered.
I'll let you know.
Thank you, Mr. Carter.
And I want to just echo what Cody said. We're, we're blessed to have people to look after other people in this county that help out, like Supervisor Davis said. So that's just one of the things, we want to make sure we don't let it go unnoticed that people do look after their own here. So we appreciate that.
Absolutely, thank you, sir. You have your informational items before you. Are there any other board member matters for tonight?
We have closed session.
Right. So now is, unless anyone has any other issues, member matters, we have a closed session matter. So Supervisor Brian?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we go into closed session under 2.2-3711.a.7, consultation with legal counsel and briefings by staff members or consultants pertaining to actual or probable litigation, where such consultation or briefing in open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of the public body. And consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by a public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel.
Second.
Motion by Supervisor Brian, and seconded by Supervisor Allen, to enter into closed session. Does anyone have any questions? All in favor, please raise your hand, aye. Those opposed, Supervisor Matthews?
Yes.
Okay. Motion carries, we are into closed session. Motion carries, we are into closed session.